November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Board of Commissioners, the town of Pittsburgh. The order of business. We're going to have a moment of silence, if you would please bow your heads for a few moments. Thank you. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Commission of Farrell, if you would lead us. Need to adopt the agenda. We will present the agenda, which is the public hearing. Quasi judicial hearing for the Hall River Christian Academy.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
All in favor, please.
Aye.
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 Thank you. So we're going to introduce this. We are going to have a public hearing. And these are really the regulations or the rules concerning this public hearing. So basically, explanation of a quasi judicial process. I will read that. So we're here. For at the request of the Hall River Christian Academy for a special use permit for K through twelve. Christian charter school located on North Carolina Highway nine oh two. And so the explanation of a quasi judicial process. The hearing on this matter is quasi judicial in nature and will be conducted in accordance with special due process safeguards. A use designated as a special use. In a particular zoning district is a use that may be appropriate in that district. But because of its nature, extent, and external effects. Requires special consideration of its location, design, and methods of operation. Before it can be deemed appropriate in the district and compatible with its surroundings. A school is permitted in the town's residential agriculture, RA zoning district with a special use permit. The applicant has the burden to demonstrate that a development application complies with applicable. The special use permit review standards. For a different evidentiary public hearing, this burden can be satisfied only by competent material and substantial evidence. Any person may appear at the hearing and submit documents, materials, and other written or testimony. Either individually or as a representative of an organization. Persons speaking at the hearing should identify themselves, state their name or business address. And if appearing on behalf of a person or the organization. State the name and mailing address of the person or organization they represent. The board of commissioners is not bound by the rules of evidence or limited to the consideration of evidence that is inadmissible in a court of law. The body may consider all testimony and evidence it deems competent and material to the application under consideration. And may exclude testimony or evidence it determines to be irrelevant. In material incompetent, unreliable, or unduly repetitive. The testimony that witnesses give today shall be taken under oath. If a witness wants the board to see written evidence such as reports, maps, pictures, or other exhibits. Then he or she should be familiar with the evidence. And should explain the document and ask that be it be introduced during or at the end of his or her testimony. Any attorney who speak should not should not give factual testimony, but may summarize their client's case. The petitioner and the town, for example, are interested persons and have standing. So we should. So we can hear from the staff at this particular point.
You got to swear the witness.
All of these are the witnesses.
They can all stand up at one time.
If everyone who has signed.
I was just gonna say I'm holding my hand up for the oath.
Okay, okay. If everyone which has signed up. To speak at this particular hearing, if all ones who have signed up will stand at once. And you have got to be sworn in.
Do you swear that the evidence you shall give the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help me God.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to ask the board members. You know, who have any information of special knowledge about the case to please describe that information for the record. So the interested persons will know and can respond. It is understood that board members may have received unsolicited communications from the public concerning special use permit. But should not have considered any such information as evidence. Related to this special use application prior to the hearing to this hearing. So if there are any board members that have information of special knowledge about this case, we need to know.
No.
May have not at this time.
Thank you. So and also before we open this hearing, like to know if there are any board members. To give you all a chance to reveal any possible conflicts or withdraw from these proceedings if necessary. Conflicts include, but are not limited to a member having fixed opinion. Prior to hearing the matter that is not suspect susceptible to change, undisclosed, or ex parte communications on the issues involved in this special use. Permit application, a close familiar. Business or other associate. Association relationships with an interested party. Person or a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. If an injection is raised to a member's participation and that member does not recuse himself or herself. The remaining members shall by majority vote. Own the objection. So is there anyone that has any possible conflicts?
No.
No.
There being no such conflicts, I hereby declare that all information received by the board about the property prior to this hearing was. And will not be considered and will not be considered in connection with this special use permit. Or if there are withdrawals voluntary or involuntary, so there are none. The remaining members having no such conflicts, I hereby declare that all information received. By the remaining board members about the property prior to this hearing was and will not be considered in connection with this special use permit application. I now open the special hearing. The public hearing. Don't have a motion to go into public hearing.
Do you have a motion to go into public hearing?
Yeah.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I will now ask the planning staff to make the presentation at this request.
Good evening.
Evening.
This special use permit application is for the River Christian Academy. The applicants are Hall River Christian Academy via via affidavit of Pittsburgh Baptist Church LLC. And Pete Deitchler and Penny Hall. His address is listed on the application. The location of this is along Highway nine oh two, which is north of Rocco Fuerte Church. There are two parcel numbers involved, zero zero six, one, eight, seven, three, and zero zero six, eight, five, seven, two. Current zoning for the site is rural agricultural. Site is forty one point six zero three acres. It's currently vacant and it's owned by the Pittsburgh Baptist Church. Proposed use is a K through twelve Christian school. The utilities propose our onsite septic system and deep well. And the only special information from our U D O that is applicable here that I'm aware of, although there may be any number of other things is that. The minimum stacking and loading spaces is forty, which is measured from the building entrance and the source is the U D O chapter six, section six point three point six. Staff has had a very substantial review of this particular application. And most of the information that I just gave you is. The basis of what we took a look at, there's a traffic impact analysis prepared in August twenty twenty five by D R M P Incorporated. This academy is not asking for annexation. They're not asking for a rezoning or any municipal municipal utility services. The school is allowed only by special use permit in this district. Deal to. Public service, excuse me, development services director.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Shawn Development Services Director. A couple of items between the N C D O T letter from the T I A review. One is the note that they are required for phase one and phase two to have items. To be constructed a westbound left turn lane on N C nine oh two at the parent entrance for with two hundred fifty feet. Of storage and appropriate tapers, as well as a monitor N C eighty seven. At N C nine oh two for signalization and then again in the phase two. To continue that monitoring of N C eighty seven. At N C nine oh two for signalization. There says the requirements are for them to do for. Hall River Christian Academy to actually implement these items. The statement of justification that was submitted does not match on number one. It says thoroughfare improvements will be implemented by N C D O T. That needs to be addressed. Another item, I reviewed the T I A piece and I did notice that there's.
Sorry. Sorry, could I ask you to repeat that, please? The item that needs to be addressed.
The item that needs to be addressed is the statement of justifications submitted by. Reston Companies Incorporated says number one thoroughfare improvements will be implemented by S D O T. The letter from N C D O T does not state they're doing any improvements. The justification says they are. That is something that we need to make sure it is clear between who is doing what. Because we have to have the letter from S D O T they are doing it. The current letter says it is required of the applicant. The second part to that is the T I A did not include the impact from fifteen five oh one reroute in the T I A. So I would ask the question is, since it looks like it was done right before that rerouting happened. So another item to be addressed. The third item is outside the T I A and I do not see a report for. Fire suppression piece, this can be done later, but it is something that if they're not going to have water sewer access for the site and the design piece. They may not have the capacity with stormwater devices, they're using that to make the fire suppression. So there is a set of calculations based on everything from seasonal high water table to pressures. And the volumes and what that capacity of that pond would be and size. Thank you.
Does any board members have questions for the planning staff regarding this request?
Yes, I do. I'd like to. Ask for an opinion about the fire suppression. And the details required. For the fire department's safety. This is a well well and septic property, is that correct?
It is well and septic and the other question is if they are just using. Access from the fire truck or they have a sprinkler system and they're pulling. Treatment process for that if they're pulling that inside the calculations, the pressure to get it from the pond. To the building or at least to the truck itself and the access point. That all would need to be worked out from a site constraint requirement and then if they can actually have a volume in the pond. If they're using everything from a clay liner or if they have the actual volume.
We have a volume for the pond?
I have nothing on the pond to be.
Okay, and how is the pond to be filled?
It's supposed to be a stormwater pond, so it should be filling naturally.
And what's the topography of that site?
Have to go back and review the piece to see that.
Flat, isn't it?
That section is considerably flat. But like I said, it may not have to do with the flatness of the site, it's more of the soil conditions. And the calculations on what they find from the soils, warrens, and the other portions, the hydros.
Sorry to be detailed about this, but. Can it can it be filled with well water?
It depends if they have a liner and then they'd have to do the calculations per evaporation and other items to do that. So I can't see without actually them showing me the size in the pond. The calculations, how long it's supposed to stay in there. It has to be for I see that.
Is that something that needs to be reviewed before approval? At this stage?
It would have to be a condition that either they have access to one or the other, it is not something that. But you have to have an either or solution to how they're going to do it. And it has to be available one way or another, if they can't get it, they have to wait till they do.
So is is that rather like, I think that our justice center has an engineered. Fire. Water tower just for fire suppression. So would that it would be a condition that says either the school has to have. A water tank and all of the pumps and supports for that, or it would have the engineered. Stormwater pond with calculations showing sufficient capacity for fire suppression.
Yes, and then what would happen in the event that the water supply has dropped because of the drought, so much conditions, you have to have an emergency condition attached to it as well.
Who makes that decision?
It would be based on their engineers design, whichever selection, they have a right to pick the the choice, but they have to have it all in place beforehand and it has to meet all the codes and regs. So. If they if it means, then they should be fine.
We don't have that currently, is that correct?
We do not have nothing, they said they that's what they intend to use.
Say again, I didn't hear you.
Said intend to use the pond, stormwater pond as the the fire suppression.
Correct.
Any additional questions?
I I have some concerns about the. Septic system. But. I think I just need to work through those questions is, would you be the?
I could answer some of those questions.
Okay. So I understand that it's proposed to have. A septic system, septic field. Rather than municipal sewer. And. What what is the reliability of of septic fields?
It is dependent on how they have them outlined, it's going to be the county permitted piece, but. They're going to need to know what the perk rate, perk rate is for the soil in the area they need to put it. If they have the drop, they need to get it from point A to point B. From the facility and if they actually have a large enough field. Where they're putting, they're not going to use something else on top of it, those type of restrictions, so it is actually dependent on how they design it. If they're using the tanks now, you know, the building to. Send it down to the fields where that lies as well. Use of oil water separator potentially is another piece, give them some capacity on that, just depends on how they set it up.
And do septic systems for. Continuous loads, how do those compare to? An institution like a school?
It is more concerned if they're using a step system or just a straight feed from one box and it has to be sized correctly. They still have the maintenance cycle. Making sure if they need to pump it out, they have to have an actual schedule for that maintenance, if they maintain it, it should be fine. But it is more based on how they do the design, which section they're going to use. And then what's their schedule for maintaining it to keep it.
So I've done a little bit in the same topic, I've done a little bit of research. It seems to me that according to the G I S soil surveys that are published. Again, they're not entirely accurate, the county is the one who's going to be doing the the perk test. But it's but just as a general description of soils around the school property. They are relatively, they're moderate, it's the description of the drainage there is moderate. But what I can. What I'd like to ask about is the property right next door that is in Pittsburgh Baptist Church as well. They have a contingent. Septic. Five year contingent septic. Approval. And I'm wondering if there is a way of extrapolating that information or not, I know the soils are similar on the map.
It depends if they're going to have that as a shared use field or if it's going to be separate. So they would have to have an easement between the two if it were shared. If they're not the same property line. And the other piece to that is if they are the same soils consistently a prostitute properties, I think there's a swath that goes. On the northern section, the two separate soils, so it depends on where the plant are located, what would be the more applicable, right?
It depends.
It depends, really. I'd literally have to see a plan and design to say, yeah, no.
Per tests are, we we can approve this without the perk test.
With.
Contingent upon.
Contingent, yeah. That is, yes, as long as it's contingent that they get that.
So the property congruent with the two properties in in question. Have a an approved well. Described online. That was four gallons per. Four gallons per minute. The total depth is three hundred and twenty feet, I'm I'm wondering if that, in your opinion, is sufficient for a school? Or do you have an opinion on?
Not have enough information to. Back and review it.
So when it comes to the well and the septic, most of this appears that it has to be a conditional use. And I know the well and the septic has to be certain amount of certain distance from each other. And so all of that would have to be indicated as a conditional use as well.
Yes, separate enough so that the field and it's not blooming and drawing the well, it's not drawing that over to it.
And would we indicate the distance that would be necessary for that?
They would need to provide the calculations and the the outline of what that needs to be on their plans. It's one of the requirements. If they're showing two properties and they're both using the same well, depends if they're both using the same septic site. And that has not been outlined enough for me to answer that.
So we don't have the designs or specifications for the septic system in the application?
I don't have that.
Or the well site? Okay. But the wells, the well is indicated to be four gallons per minute. It's not a congruent property, it's not their property, it's one right next door.
So they would still have to actually do a check.
That's yet to be determined.
They still need a soils test as well and a full perk for. Feature, they're going to try to use for one or both.
Jonathan, we regarding the minimum stacking at forty vehicles. How will we increase that stack stacking or how is it measured?
That's actually what's outlined in the U D O, I think the big question is if are they on their property with all the stacking or are they off?
I didn't know.
If they're on or off their property with stacking. Because they should be using their property for the stacking and not impacting the road or someone else's property. So that would be the the question there.
And. The property that belongs to the Baptist Church and the Hall River Christian Academy. That is on. That is on, that parking, I assume is on two properties, correct?
It shows only the side for the, the Christian Academy and the loop seems to be overlapping the other side. But I don't see anything on the church side besides that as of yet. I haven't seen the other plans.
I believe it's in our packet here, that some of the parking is on the Baptist Church.
That's that, that's true, I'm talking about.
Okay.
There, there was, in the same topic, there was a discussion about an easement to that second property. Has that been submitted yet or not?
We would have to have a letter from them saying that they would accept that stacking as part of that as well. Because impacting another property without their permission, it's not something we would want to.
Have they given you any indication about? When they plan on beginning construction?
I have.
Making ground.
I have not had that discussion. I don't know if, no.
And was there any talk about annexation into the town?
Not to my knowledge. Randy would know that.
Okay.
Had a discussion about it. We had several discussions, I'm sorry. We had more than one discussion about it and they determined they did not want to annex it.
Have, have they talked about Tri River uh, services?
We had a discussion about the distance between uh, the nearest water line and this site and the lack of sewer available to the site. There was a discussion about a force main that came past there, but you realize you cannot tap into a force main. So no, currently there is no infrastructure before you get to the intersection, which is a substantial distance. But I guess everything's relative.
We have one more question. Please.
She's a P E, so.
At what point would you evaluate that that well and septic would be enough to, for this school?
It would be at the site plan and in the C D finalization to say, yes, it can be full.
Okay, so if you, if it's determined that the well and septic is not acceptable. Then what other option would they have?
Um, they would need to be able to attach to the sewer system and the water system if they can't get those two. And they would have to have access. So that would nullify their project unless they can get access.
Which would require annexation, voluntary annexation.
Okay.
Yes. But this site plan she's just describing to you, that's the next step. If you get your, if you get your special use permit, there is no other stop between here and there.
Okay.
There is one other item I forgot to add, just on the bottom of the M S T A site plan comments. If they do not get the easement that's pending for the adjacent property, um, that nullifies the analysis for the T I A as well.
Okay. Sorry, can you repeat that?
At the bottom of the letter from S D O T, the M S T A site plan comments. They're required to have an access easement that we're talking about for that second property. If they do not get that easement. It will nullify the T I A analysis that will have to be redone, which means this would also nullify this as well. Does it take into account stacking on that other property?
Let, let me ask you, uh, maybe this is more of a, a legal question. If uh, there is no agreement for an easement right now for this property to accommodate for the traffic. Then the T I A that's been provided to us is moot, is that correct?
That's correct. According to, that's N S D O T's words.
They'd have to reassess.
They have to reassess. And the question is, they may still need to reassess because they did not account for the river out of fifteen five oh one that would still impact that same area.
Okay.
Any additional questions from the board?
This time, alright.
Yeah, just.
Okay.
Just to, to clarify that, that, that eastbound driveway access that is proposed is not the same as the property for the Baptist Church. That's a different property owner to the east.
But both properties are owned by, are owned by the church. But this is a land owned by the church.
On both sides.
No, I'm sorry. The Hispanic church is not owned by the Baptist church. Baptist church owns these two parcels that are on one or more of the maps that we'll see in a minute. And so predominantly the school and most of its stacking requirements are going to happen on one parcel. The other parcel has been set aside potentially as a site for church, for First Baptist Church. The church has specific parking regulations that are required for the church as well. So you don't just automatically share the use of the school parking lot. Nice if you do, possibly better for the environment if you do. But certainly not a requirement. So the church be required to have one parking space for before seats inside of the church. And other things that you need to do.
Thank you.
Everything?
Right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions at this time from the board, we're going to hear from the applicant. We're going to hear from the applicant and the other proponents of.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin and Order Commissioners. Uh, my name is Brady Herman. I'm a local land use and municipal attorney with the Rowall Firm in Chapel Hill, fifteen twenty-six East Franklin Street. I, along with my co-counsel, T C Morpheus, uh, as well as members of the H R C A team. Here on behalf of Hall River Christian Academy for this special use permit application. Um, we're excited to be here tonight and I first want to thank this board and as well as staff for um. Accommodating and scheduling the special meeting just for this quasi judicial hearing. And also want to give a big thank you to planning staff for working with us and getting us to this point and presenting our application to you all this evening. Now, I will be going and taking the lead uh, during this hearing in terms of directing um. Uh, Hall River Christian Academy's experts and witnesses. And which I will go ahead and preface that the testimony and evidence that you will hear from them will show. That this project meets all five standards uh, for special use permit approval outlined in the U D O. But my colleague, T C Morpheus, will first give you just a brief overview of quasi judicial procedures. Um, but before I turn it over to him, I would like to go ahead and hand out our exhibit notebook. This will have uh, documents that are not otherwise in our special use permit application or in our agenda packet. But I want to go ahead and give that to you all because I will be referring to some of those and entering those exhibits into the record uh, throughout the duration of this hearing.
Thank you.
I'll say with our exhibit notebook, there is a little index on the front that sort of outlines what our exhibits are. And as well as a copy of our PowerPoint presentation, which will be uploaded shortly and, and T C will just go through a couple of those interest lines.
Good evening. Again, my name is T C Morpheus. I'm one of Brady Herman's law partners. Uh, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem for going over uh, a high level quasi judicial procedure. That's going to save us all some time. Um, I have a few PowerPoint slides that I'm going to use to. Just talk about quasi judicial procedure in particular because it's been some years since this board has had a special use permit proceeding. Uh, as with any of our witnesses this evening, please feel free to interrupt me if you have questions, otherwise I will proceed. Um, if you could, let's skip the next two slides. So just go on to slide four, which is S U P review standard. If you could go uh, two more. That's perfect, great. Alright, so as a board, under uh, your Unified Development Ordinance Section ten point four point ten L. There are five standards that you have to evaluate whether the Hall River Christian Academy has met uh, for granting special use permits. Those standards are one, that the proposed use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. That the proposed use complies with all requirements uh, of the U D O, including all regulations and standards generally applicable within the zoning district. And specifically applicable to the particular type of special use. And here I want to pause and I want to thank staff for already providing some guidance about conditions. As you all talked about, there are a number of things that are not before you tonight. Uh, that's very typical. As you already heard, at this stage is the zoning entitlement stage. Uh, there are later stages for site plans for engineering review, construction and design. We'd have to meet all those requirements. So it's certainly appropriate to impose conditions such as must meet fire code or other things in the future, must have an updated T I A. But at this stage, uh, what you're looking at are just these standards. Your third requirement, uh, and I just want to say that, so what you really know is doesn't meet the U D O, doesn't meet these five standards. Your third standard is will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or as a public necessity. Four is in generally in harmony with intensity, scale and character of development uh, existing or planned in the surrounding area. And five is generally consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and any other plans officially adopted by the Town Board of Commissioners. Alright, so if you could, the next slide, please. Now, this is important. Uh, when we talk about burden of production and persuasion. The ultimate issue that is before you is whether there is sufficient evidence in the record to establish that the H R C A's application. Does or does not meet the standards of U D O Section ten point four point ten L. We have the burden of presenting sufficient evidence that our application meets that standard. As our mayor Pro Tem has already said, that's based on competent, material, substantial evidence in the record. So it's not things that you've heard about in the grocery store or that you think you know. It's the evidence that's presented tonight. It's evidence that's in the application, which at the close of our presentation will last be admitted into the record. Once our prima facie case has been established, that means we've put on enough evidence using experts and testimony uh, from qualified laypeople. The burden then shifts to anyone who opposes the special use permit to show that the standards have not been met. And the same standard applies. Opposition evidence must be competent, substantial and material. So again, it's not what you think is good or bad. It is, have we met our burden? And if we have, then we are entitled to the permit. If we do not meet our burden, then we are not entitled to the permit. If we meet our burden, then it shifts to anyone who is uh, opposed to present similar uh, quality evidence. We have the next slide, please. And I won't beat a dead horse, but uh, our most recent guidance from this was from North Carolina Supreme Court case, P H G Asheville. Uh, L L C V City of Asheville. And basically what the court said is that in the event that the applicants satisfy this initial burden of production. When prima facie he is entitled to the requested permit. At that point, a decision to deny the application should be based on findings contra, which are supported by competent materials, substantial evidence appearing in the record. With a local government body lacking the authority to deny a permit on grounds not expressly stated in the ordinance. Given that it must employ specific statutory criteria which are relevant. Next slide, please. Alright, so I want to very quickly go through the kind of testimony you're going to be hearing tonight. We've already talked about competent, substantial, material evidence. Uh, again, I won't beat that to death, but you do need to know competent is the person who's qualified. To give that testimony. Material is that the evidence is relevant to the question before you. So whatever's happening in Carrier Apex is not relevant. Whatever's happening uh, with some other use in the community is not relevant. Substantial evidence, this is where there's a little bit of wiggle room. It is that which reasonable mind would regard as sufficiently supporting a specific result. And that's really for you, the board, to determine what is sufficient. Only parties who have standing can cross-examine and direct-examine witnesses. So we have standing, we'll be presenting our evidence. If we choose, we could cross-examine uh, other people presenting testimony this evening. Next slide, please. Alright, so again, a layperson is someone who lacks professional or specialized knowledge on the subject. General opinion testimony by a layperson is not permitted unless it's accompanied by corroborating factual evidence. An expert is someone whose education, skill and experience qualifies them to testify about a particular issue. As we'll talk about on the next slide, expert testimony is required for quasi judicial hearings of North Carolina state law in certain matters. And so the general rule is that anyone with material knowledge can provide factual testimony. A lay citizen can talk about what they know, what they personally have seen. Expert testimony is mandatory in three situations under state law. The first is testimony regarding the use of property in a particular way that would affect the value of other property. The second is testimony regarding the increase in traffic from proposed development, whether that would pose a danger to public safety. And the third is matters about which only expert testimony will be generally admissible into the rules of evidence. So we have some experts that are going to be talking about a few other things as well. Next slide. Alright, so at this point, I'm going to hand it back over to Brady. We're going to begin with our case in chief. Are there any questions uh, at this time? Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and briefly introduce our uh, witness experts and as well as other members of our team who also be testifying. The first is Pete Bogel with, an architect with the Bogel Firm Architecture. Uh, next is Garrett Neal, civil engineer with Neal Civil Engineering P L L C. We have Ronald Stevenson. He is with uh, D R M P, a traffic engineer. We also have Nicholas Kirkland. He is with um, Kirkland Appraisals LLC and is a certified appraiser. We also have Reynolds Neely. He is um, a planning consultant with uh, Neely Planning and Zoning Services. We also have Matt Williams. He is with um, Retson uh, and is also our project manager. We have Penny Hall, who is the president of Hall River Christian Academy Board of Directors. And lastly, we have Pastor Peter McDonald, who's probably right behind me. He is a senior pastor of the Pittsburgh Baptist Church. Uh, so again, I want to reiterate that the testimony and evidence that you will hear from these individuals collectively will show. That we meet all five standards for S U P approval that T C showed you on the slide um, just a couple of minutes ago. That pretty much concludes our opening at the pleasure of the board. I'd be happy to go ahead and call our first witness.
Before you do that, can you identify Pastor McDonald for me?
I don't know if I'll stand right in his way or not. With that, I'll go ahead and call Mr. Matt Williams with Retson.
Matt Williams, Retson Companies, twenty seventy-five Juniper Lake Road, West End, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Um, I'm the project manager with, with Retson, um, helping assist Hall River through this process. A little, little brief information about Retson, um, we're a full-service real estate development um, and general contracting firm. Um, that we manage, we basically manage projects from initial concept through completion. During my four-plus years with Retson, um, I've led or co-led more than a hundred commercial projects for local and national clients. With budgets ranging, ranging anywhere from two million to over ten million. My work primarily focuses on due diligence, entitlements um, and permitting. Um, but I've also developed strong expertise in both the real estate and construction support of projects. To give me kind of a well-rounded um, frame of reference uh, when I go in and, and work with clients such as. Hall River Christian Academy. So my relationship started with them in November of twenty twenty-three. Um, we've been working closely ever since. To uh, advance their vision for a private Christian. We've been working closely ever since to advance their vision for a private Christian Academy campus that will serve the needs of their current students, future students and the overall broader community. To support this effort here tonight and throughout the process, I've assembled a team of respected professionals whose expertise has been integral throughout our extensive due diligence process up to this point. As Mr. Herman continues our presentation and kind of navigating us through the testimonies and introduces our expert witnesses, you will see, you will see the substantial time, effort and resources dedicated to reaching this point. While the process might have taken a little longer than we all expected, every step has strengthened this project. I'd like to thank Mr. Kahoon Tingle and his staff for their support with all the pre-submental meetings, community engagements, regulatory review, and just being, always being there to answer the questions that we needed answered. Finally, I'd like to extend my gratitude to Hall River Christian Academy for entrusting me to run this project for them and collaborate with them, as well as Pittsburgh Baptist Church and Pastor Peter for all the assistance they've provided as well. We're confident that our work meets, that our work meets the requirements for special use permit approval. I'll be here available to answer any further questions with respect to my role or Redson as a company. And at this time, I'll turn things back over to Mr. Herman. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So I want to briefly leave just one follow-up question. Were you the one that submitted Hall River Christian Academy's special use permit to the town?
I am.
And the special use permit application that is in the board's agenda packet this evening, is that a true and accurate copy of the application that you submitted? At this time, I would like to go ahead and submit our special use permit application into the record. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call Ms. Penny Hall, President of the Board of Directors for Hall River Christian Academy.
Good evening, Commissioners and Protim Mayor, and thank you again for giving us the time this evening. My name is Penny Hall and I serve as Board President for Hall River Christian Academy, a K twelve classical school. For the past sixteen years, our school has faithfully served families in Pittsburgh and Chatham County by providing a high-quality education in a caring environment. Over the last twelve years in our leased facilities at twenty-four twenty-eight Soho Plum Spring Road in Pittsburgh, we have grown from sixty students to a hundred and eighty students. A clear testimony both to the increasing community demand and to the trust placed in us. Chatham County has one of the fastest growing school systems in the state, and many families in Pittsburgh are actively seeking a faith-based option right here in their community. At the same time, this growth has made one thing unmistakably clear. Our current facilities are no longer sufficient to meet this demand. This project will provide capacity to serve three hundred students by twenty thirty, giving more families in Chatham County a local classical Christian option without needing to leave the area. As the only school of this kind in Pittsburgh, our new campus will offer expanded seats, shorter commutes and a stable educational presence for years to come. By adding capacity locally, we will allow more Pittsburgh families to pursue their preferred educational option and have their children learning and growing in their own community. Tonight, we respectfully request your approval of a special use permit, just as the first step in the construction approval process. The facility we propose will offer modern classrooms, dedicated science, arts and music spaces, thoughtfully designed outdoor areas and a master planned low-profile layout that is designed to minimize impact on adjoining and adjacent properties. Our educational model focuses on recognizing truth, goodness and beauty in the people and the world around us. And thus, our campus is intentionally designed to harmonize with its surroundings where education can take place in peaceful, natural courtyard areas as well as in the classroom. We're grateful that so many in our community share this vision for high-quality local educational options. If you're here this evening in support of our proposed campus, would you please just raise your hand to show your support for this effort? Thank you. We work intentionally to be good neighbors and active community partners. Our school and families support local organizations like B F W, Senior Assisted Living Communities, animal rescue organizations, the Special Olympics, community food banks, community youth sports programs, because we believe our investment in children is also an investment in the greater community. As we build this new campus, we intend to engage with the community, respect natural buffers, manage traffic thoughtfully and contribute positively to Pittsburgh's future. We are here because we want to invest in our town's future, strengthen the educational landscape, broaden opportunities for families and serve our region well for the days to come. Thank you very much.
Question for him, Ms. Hall. Is this a year-round school or is it?
It is a traditional.
Calendar school. And if you wouldn't mind, I know where your school is now. It's a great setting. It's beautiful there. Can you describe a typical traffic day for me? Oh, drop off and pickup. Yeah, you said about a hundred and eighty students. And you have it staggered. How are you organizing it right now?
We don't stagger. We have a loop to the parking lot and we don't back up onto the road. That was actually, I'm sure our experts can speak to that. That was part of our preparation for this future growth. Any other questions?
Just make a comment that you answered one of my questions while you were leaving the mayor. So thank you.
Next, we'd like to go and call Pastor Peter McDonald, Senior Pastor for Pittsburgh Baptist Church.
Evening, Mayor and members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight and having to share with you. My name is Peter McDonald and I'm honored to serve as pastor of Pittsburgh Baptist Church located at the address of one twenty-one West Salisbury Street in Pittsburgh. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the church pursuant to the authority duly given for me to act and testify on behalf of the church for Hall River Christian Academy's special use permit application. I will briefly explain the relationship between Pittsburgh Baptist Church and Hall River Christian Academy, while we have agreed to allow the use of both parcels for the special use permit request and to speak to the documentation we're providing as evidence of this agreement. Pittsburgh Baptist Church and Hall River Christian Academy have maintained a friendly and collaborative relationship with a shared commitment to serving families, the church and this community since the beginning days of the school. We have joyfully watched this school grow and make an incredible impact in the world through generations of students who have been educated in classical Christian education, grew in their faith and transitioned into the world of collegiate studies and the workforce with the greater goal of growing lifelong learners who will transform the world for Christ. Pittsburgh Baptist Church has consistently encouraged students and families to be a part of Hall River Christian Academy, and we couldn't be more excited for them as they now have an opportunity to purchase land and build a permanent home for their school in Pittsburgh on Highway ninety-two. Pittsburgh Baptist Church has owned both parcels six one eight seven three and six eight five seven two since nineteen ninety-two. And as our church family has grown over the years, we have prayerfully sought to develop this property for the greater purposes of our church and in serving our community. We began discussions with Hall River Christian Academy about the possibility of building a permanent school on Highway nine oh two in two thousand twenty-two, and ultimately unanimously voted to offer for sale parcel six eight six one eight seven three to Hall River Christian Academy in October of two thousand twenty-three, which the church's letter of intent to sell is included in your packet's agenda on page thirty-five. In addition, Pittsburgh Baptist Church has been working towards developing a new church on parcel six eight five seven two as Hall River Christian Academy has been planning to build on their future parcel. The church's parcel six eight five seven two is located immediately adjacent to Hall River Christian Academy School Site to the east. Due to the site constraints of Hall River Christian Academy School Site, parcel six one eight seven three, Hall River Christian Academy is proposing to construct a portion of the school's parking lot and vehicular stacking on the church's parcel, parcel six eight five seven two. In order to comply with the town of Pittsburgh's unified development ordinance, we are committed to beginning substantial progression for the construction of our church project on the church's parcel six eight five seven two within two years of Hall River Christian Academy's S U P approval. Included in your agenda packet on pages thirty-three and thirty-four is my affidavit submitted with the S U P application that reflects this commitment by the church. We are currently working on a civil site plan design, permitting, architectural design, and ultimately filing a building permit application as we follow the phased process with our developers. To move forward with the S U P request, Hall River Christian Academy requires the ability to use both parcels, one for the school site and the other for the school's parking and stacking. Pittsburgh Baptist Church has agreed to support this need because the proposed use is consistent with Hall River Christian Academy's mission and is compatible with the long-term vision for the property. We will work with Hall River Christian Academy's developers to execute and record a shared access and parking and temporary construction easement agreement so that the school's parking and vehicular stacking needs will be sufficient as the campus is built. This proposed easement agreement will be shared with you later on in this hearing. Thank you for your time and consideration. Pittsburgh Baptist Church is supportive of Hall River's S U P request and is committed to ensuring a transparent and well-coordinated process. The church is also very excited to be a part of this opportunity for Hall River Christian Academy. And we're praying that this land will be a blessing to them, to our community and our church family for generations to come, and we look forward to calling them our neighbors. Thank you so much.
Pastor McDonald, just a couple of follow-up questions. If you would, I'm going to point you to our exhibit notebook sitting right there next to you. If you and the board would go and turn to exhibit A for me. You mentioned during your statement that there is an easement agreement that the church is intending to go and convey to the school for this project. Is this exhibit A, that easement agreement that you're referring to?
Yes.
And this easement is in draft form, is it not?
Yes.
And will this easement draft be the same or something substantially similar to the easement that the church intends to grant to the school if the project is approved? Again, going to the things like parking, access, vehicle stacking, utility installation and temporary construction.
Yes.
I have no further questions for the board, guys.
Do have a question about the easement agreement. I do read that this was prepared by Brady Herman without the benefit of title examination. Will that be a part of the process?
So that is usually put in for attorneys who don't render opinions of title. I'm not a closing attorney, but I do draft easements all the time. So that's more of boilerplate language. It doesn't.
Okay. All right. I understand. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to go ahead and call Mr. Pete Bogel with the Bogel Firm in Architecture. And I'll just go ahead and preface to the board that with these next experts that I'm going to go and call up, I need to lay the foundation to go and qualify them as an expert. It seems a bit redundant, but I have to go and do sort over to preserve sort of our evidence that in the testimony that we're given today. So I just, I know it's going to be a little bit redundant, but just bear with us here. Mr. Bogel, will you please introduce yourself and where you work, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm Pete Bogel. I'm an architect out of Salisbury, one ten North Main, Salisbury.
And would you just describe, Mr. Bogel, what you do, what your firm does and your experiences?
Sure. We practice all commercial architecture. Do a lot of work with churches, some with private Christian schools as well. Do a lot of preliminary planning as well, specifically with Redson. We've done several projects that try to get through these special use permits or rezonings, things like that. I also have background as a planning board member and planning board chair for Rowan County for two full terms, a number of years.
And if I could direct you to our exhibit notebook and specifically exhibit A, that most people, or excuse me, exhibit C, as in Charlotte. Is that your resume?
See, it's me.
And have you been recognized as an expert in any sort of legal proceeding in North Carolina, whether it's a court or a board sitting just like you all in this quasi judicial capacity?
Numerous times when we're similar to this.
And are you generally familiar with the building fire and safety codes?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the development regulations of the town of Pittsburgh that set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance?
I am.
So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and enter in exhibit C, Mr. Bogel's resume. And I would also like to offer Mr. Bogel as a qualified expert in the field of architecture and building and site design. Now, Mr. Bogel, did you assist in any way with the S U P application in terms of the documents that were submitted?
I did.
And specifically, what, what did you participate in? What did you help to go and develop?
We developed the preliminary site plan, preliminary buildings, these that you see with our name on them here in the corner, and some of the slides and information to digging into the U D O that we'll see in just a minute.
And is this concept site plan that you did, is this in the S U P application?
It is.
And would you just go and sort of describe the site plan and in particular, explain how did the design of the school fits within the confines of the property and also meets the needs of the school?
Sure. So this site plan is the final iteration of multiple, multiple iterations of how to best stack the school's needs and meet the U D O requirements and satisfy building code and fire code provisions. We looked at numerous different options, this also working in partnership with Pittsburgh Baptist Church with their plans. We did some preliminary, just early sketches for where they may want to locate their buildings as well. So meeting the school's needs with specifics to the phase one, phase one A and phase one B is how they ended up breaking it up. The two red buildings that you see there and then future phases in the kind of purple color there. The school wanted to develop as a courtyard type of layout so that most of the student activity was contained inside of the buildings. You know, being more of a buffer between them and any kind of public street or access or anything like that. Providing enough loop road to provide all of the stacking, all of the parking for the phase one buildings, actually all of the parking for future phases as well. The piece, one piece that we had challenges with is providing enough stacking area for when we developed out all of the future growth. And so the way we approached that was to partner with the church in their parking areas to be able to use those parking areas for stacking during times that the church would not be there. The, we looked further into, well, some of these are going to get into my presentation here, so.
Can I just interrupt you just real quick? It's a bit of a nuance here. Could you just sort of explain, and I know the planning staff could do a great job, as well, but it just was never brought up, that why the Pittsburgh Baptist Church's parcel, the six eight five seven two, why that was also included in the school's S U P? And why Pittsburgh Baptist needs to go and have that commitment in terms of them going through with their project on their parcel in terms of the church, which is permitted use by right?
This is an interesting nuance in the U D O. A parking lot by itself is not allowed as a primary use for the R A district. So therefore, the. So therefore, the the church would have to build something to be able to build that parking lot. We're not dependent on that parking lot with this layout. We did decide to put the drive in on that side to give more length. And that that is because of that drive being on parcel oh oh six eight five seven two is why we have to have the SUP for both the school side and the church side.
Anybody have any questions in regard to that?
I do, yes. I know this is a, this is not a finalized drawing, but I'm wondering, where's, where would the septic go? I'm assuming that it's going to go south of that Carolina Power easement.
No, septic is actually shown up near the top, up near Highway nine oh two. It's indicated there with some hatched areas. Initial subject of personal area, that is the soils that tested out a lot better or that were shown up on the G I S is a lot better.
So your well is going to be on the other side of the school?
Well, it's shown. Actually, did not make this. The wells locations that we have looked at, of course, this is one that we'll have to determine later on, which is why we haven't shown it here. But looking at, I don't have any kind of pointer, the very southwest corner where where the loop road bends there at the end of the long red parking lot area just north of the fifty-foot riparian buffer in that area.
In in your opinion, was was that riparian buffer feed a pond or not?
That's not the, that is not the intent.
There won't be a water source for you, is that correct?
For the pond, no.
I have one more question. In reference, you were saying something about the park stacking to be done at the parking areas, the church parking areas. So when the church is built, what are you going to do about the stacking then? What's your?
It's a great shared use of parking area because the church will use parking on weekends mostly when the school is not there. So this is churches and schools co-sharing parking lot is a fantastic match. And you can actually see that in this slide here, the green lines are where we can stack a lot of additional cars when that parking lot is built. And that again is for future phase, the red lines that you see serve all of Phase One A, Phase One B for their parking and for their stacking areas.
Mr. Vogel, the diagram that you have here, is that also in the SUP application?
It is. And we have some folks who have, who are more qualified than myself, actually, to speak on the the parking and the stacking. We'll be speaking.
Now, Mr. Vogel, I assume that you have reviewed the town's special use permit review soon, is that right?
Yes, I have.
And in particular, if I can point you to exhibit D of our notebook as well as the board, that's U D O section ten point four point ten. Special use permit review procedures, that's on page two thirty-four of the U D O. And if you flip over to two thirty-five subsection L, it sets forth the five standard.
It does.
I'd like to go ahead and enter in exhibit B into the record. U D O section ten point four point ten. Mr. Vogel, I'll specifically refer to L two, the proposed special use comprised of all the requirements of this ordinance meeting the U D O, including all regulations and standards generally applicable with the zoning district and specifically applicable to the particular type of special use. So with that standard, you know, when your expertise in designing a school and based on your training, experience, familiarity with the building and safety codes and this well-developed regulations, do you have an opinion of whether the school will satisfy this subsection L two standard?
I do, and it, and my opinion is that it absolutely does meet this, meet all of the U D O requirements.
And I understand that you have several PowerPoint slides that are forthcoming that that specifically goes through and summarizes how this project complies with all the U D O requirements.
Yes, sir.
So have you just briefly got through some of those slides?
Okay, so our job was to show the preliminary design and how we meet the U D O standards. We've explored multiple design options, seeking the best solutions for the school, working in partnership with Pittsburgh Baptist Church. We need this special use permit granted now so that we can dig further into all of the engineering that it takes to come to the final solutions for this the site plan, for the engineered site plan. So this document has been compiled to show that preliminary design of the campus, buildings of H R C A are in general compliance with the Pittsburgh U D O. Further design, engineering reviews and approvals, of course, will be required to obtain that full permitting. And this document is designed to show, well, it shows that the design concepts provide viable solutions meeting the intent of all the applicable U D O requirements. We go to the next slide, please. Start with the zoning district that it's in. This is in residential agriculture or residential agriculture district R A. The dimensional standards set for, set forth in two point two point five. You can see that the minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet. The the piece of the property that Paul River, and I should, I'll preface all of this as saying that my numbers represent just the the parcel on the west, not the entire parcel. So the the minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet. This parcel is five hundred ninety-eight thousand, or thirteen point seven two acres. Width is one fifth, minimum width is one fifty, we're over four hundred and eighty. Net density, that's that's dwelling units per acre, so that doesn't really apply for a school. Lot coverage maximum is fifty percent. H R C A, when you do the math, it comes out to twenty-three point eight percent, and that's a lot due to all of that area that's in behind that remains open. The minimum front yard setback for this property is fifty feet. We've actually pushed the the project back well away from the road. We're a little over two hundred feet from the road itself to the first building. Minimum rear yard setback's thirty, and we're at six hundred. Side is twenty-five, and we're at thirty-seven. Structure height is thirty-five. H R C A as designed to the peak of the roof is thirty-two feet, so we're already under it. I did include twelve point, ten point five there that defines structure height as the mean of a sloped roof, which in this case is preliminary design shows is twenty feet roughly to the mean height. Also listed here that cuplas in twelve eleven three don't count into that height. And you'll see on some of the renderings that we've provided, there is a cupla there on that front building. So schools are allowed in the R A district with the special use permit. Special use permits are not uncommon for schools. I did some quick look at all of your districts of the twelve districts that you have, schools are allowed in ten. Seven of those tens, seven of those ten require special use permits. But when you actually do the math of your entire, all all of the acreage in the in Pittsburgh town limits, it's roughly eighty percent of the acreage in Pittsburgh town limits would require an SUP for a school. So we're not uncommon here. Next slide, please. This is just quickly the riparian buffer where that's covered in four point two point three. We've shown that we've identified that and that area will remain protected. Section four point four, stormwater management. Again, this is one of those things that we have to dig further into once we get to the engineered design. But stormwater be designed to meet or exceed U D O and state standards. That'll be handled by our civil engineer to handle a hundred percent of the required stormwater management on site. Section five point two is, has to do with open space. And we are well in excess of the open space due to the size of the site. Next slide, please. Perimeter buffer and landscaping, again, these are things that will be further reviewed in in the further developed site plans. But just as in general, the the project approach is the existing tree line on the west would be retained between Hall River and the Hispanic Church. Additional landscaping would be planted to meet U D O requirements for all perimeter parking, parking lots, screens, et cetera, as defined in all of chapter five. Whether we end up using some berms or some fencing, again, that's to be determined to meet some of those as well. And next slide, please. Chapter six is development standards. Chapter six has some important pieces in it here. Development standards set forth in chapter six will be met or exceeded specifically for a school within a low-density residential area, holding to the purposes and requirements as listed. Our project approach, we'll get into this more in some of the next pages, but of the purposes, this kind that I highlighted here, the purpose of this chapter is also to enhance the visual quality of non-residential development, to soften the appearance of expansive paved areas and building mass, and to create and maintain a pleasing appearance in the community, reduce the effects of glare and heat caused by parking areas, and to reduce the visual clutter along commercial streets. So looking at each one of those real quickly, the visual qualities, H R C A campus is intentionally designed with classically, with classic details to instill a sense of place of permanence and importance of classical education and values. As far as softening appearances, we have an increased setback from fifty to two hundred feet. We are doing the, approaching this as a shared parking lot, shared driveway entry with all the landscape buffers and screens, et cetera, that would provide that pleasing appearance. And speaking to reduction of glare and heat, again, that shared parking with the church property significantly reduces the total required paved surfaces meeting parking requirements and pickup and drop-off lanes, stacking areas for both facilities during their individual hours of operation. And also generally speaking, this church, or sorry, this school is being placed beside of an existing church, so we already have a public assembly type establishment, already established on the site, the school, and then what would be the Pittsburgh Baptist Church in their by right development in the future. So next slide, please. Six point three point five, also in your development standards, actually encourages vehicular connectivity. Cross access between parking areas of adjoining developments shall be provided, says number four there. So our project approach is that H R C A would construct the main drive to then be shared in the future by the church when they develop their their buildings. Six point three point five point four also encourages and even requires this interconnectivity.
Mr. Vogel, just real quick, right there, exhibit A that I entered into the record on Pastor McDonald's testimony, that easement agreement would essentially suffice under this standard in terms of the connectivity and access, is that right?
That's correct.
So essentially, that easement agreement, if this project is approved and it's recorded and entered into by the parties, then it would satisfy the the standard, is that right?
Yes. Six point three point six, next slide, please, is vehicular access and management. So the minimum parking requirements are provided on the H R C A parcel. Phase one would require eighty-seven total parking spaces. We've provided eighty-nine. Total of all the phases is a hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces required, and we've provided a hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces. The shared parking designated by that six point four point three H with legally recorded easements per six point three point five point six. The shared parking area would be used for event parking, for extended stacking and student pickup and drop-off in future phases. And you can see the the required tables, how we got to some of those calculations there on the on the left.
Question about that. Can you, can you cite the requirements for kindergarten drop-off? And are you complying with that, or or special education students? Do they not have to have separate entrances?
Can we go back to the site plan?
Is it on the site plan?
Yes, it is.
And then, never mind.
We have in the front, there's a separate area. There are two different drop-off areas.
Thank you.
Like wherever we were.
Apologies.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Mr. Vogel, not to beat a dead horse again, but exhibit A would go and satisfy the shared parking.
Yes. And next slide, please. Six five two, talks about public water and sewer. This is one that we've gone round and round with at our. I love having a fire line and public water and public sewer right there in front of the site. We don't have that with the site. So really, the the initial search was, well, how can we get it there? That was the initial approach, was how can we get public water and sewer here? We found public water. That's not too big of a thing to get there is from Highway eighty-seven. It's about twenty-four hundred feet from there to the to the Hall River side of this, of these two parcels. But septic, or sorry, sewer was just unattainable from where the site is to where it currently is. We found the one line, but it was a forced main. You can't tap into that. So the approach then was, well, what can we do on site? And we did start looking with, what are our soil types? How how are we perking out here? We brought in our civil engineer that has a background and has experience with both of these. How do we do firefighting if fire department isn't going to bring tanker trucks out to a a site? We'll say that the buildings themselves are designed small enough, each individual building, that they do not require fire suppression systems. Sprinklers are not required inside the buildings. We've used size and fire type two construction, non non combustible construction for these buildings. That's, that's how we will be providing fire safety to meet North Carolina fire fire code. Fire pond is something that we've done before. I've been involved in a project with Sand Hills Classical Christian. And they had large ponds actually there on site that they use for fire suppression or firefighting water. The project that you have in front of you, the proposal for this project at this point to obtain this SUP puts forth that we can provide enough water with a fire pond. Again, that's something that other experts will be able to speak to better than I can, but it is a viable solution. We need this SUP so we can get further into engineering to prove whether it works or not. Thankfully, we also have a viable solution if that, for some reason, does not work, and that's extending a fire line along nine oh two. Again, that's not the direction that the school would want to go, but it is a possible solution. That also would come with the annexation. Again, not where they want to go, but it is a possible solution. We're following this as best for, as far as we can until we know we have to change gears, if that makes sense. I probably said most everything in here already, but public water and sewer not available to the site, there is a twelve-inch line on Highway eighty-seven. Testing has been performed for soils. Preliminary septic design is based on, as a viable solution. One other piece that I didn't say actually is, yes, we can bring water to a site and still have septic, so public water and private septic. Actually, this building that we're in right now is a good example of that. But that's, we've done that on other projects as well. Any questions on that piece? Okay, general lighting standard, again, that's something we can easily the standards that we can easily meet. Requirements in R A is point five foot handles at the property line. We can easily meet the point five foot handles or less. Design will also meet all the other U D O standards for dark cop dark sky compliance glare, lighting performance, lighting color, parking lot light, building facade, sports areas, signage, and any other U D O requirements having to do with lighting. Signage section six point seven is something that will be done in the future and will meet all the U D O standards as those are submitted. Next slide, please. So commercial development design. The final design will be further reviewed, of course, to comply with the U D O. Preliminary design aligns with section section six eight two by just looking at your list here, A one requires building orientation to front the street. What we're showing this building is a courtyard design with the front building fronting highway nine oh two, setback of two hundred feet. Other buildings around the courtyard will be parallel or perpendicular to highway nine oh two. Section A three, multiple buildings courtyard design exemplifies the ideals listed in the U D A requirements for breaks in the buildings, visible entry points, primary building entry facing, et cetera. And then B is really doesn't apply because we don't have out parcels. C also doesn't apply because we're not three stories. So next page, please. Further looking at the requirements of what the building is supposed to look like by the U D O. D has to do with facades. So offsets are provided in compliance, as shown on the preliminary design. Alternative facade improvements are also provided, including columns, pilasters, roof changes, trim details. D three doesn't apply because our side facades are not street facing. However, the plan is to continue all of the detailing, the nice classical detailing on all of the faces of the building per the per the owner's request and desires. D four outbuildings architectural detailing is consistent across the campus. E is section E has to do with facade materials. And just quickly, one through four there, facades will all be brick with accents of cast stone, painted trim, standing seam metal roofs with classical and traditional architectural detailing, which all of those easily meet and exceed the the ordinance requirements. Then the last slide, the one we've been waiting for. Six eight continues. Finestration transparency requires twenty five percent. We will easily be above that with our final designs. The approach the approach remains consistent throughout all the classroom buildings on campus, with the only two potential exceptions being the gym and the chapel, which are actually in located internal and on the rear. So those aren't those don't have these requirements of the twenty five percent. And then G talks about main roof forms. What we're showing is a six and twelve, which meets the the requirements, the fence would all be located on the backside. As to the maximum extent practical is how G says this. And then off-street parking, H allows two bays of parking maximum between the street and the and the building. And that's exactly what we're showing is two bays of parking. And then the last piece here is a loading zone, and those will all be clearly in the back of the of the campus. So those are all of my comments and my notes that I took earlier. Any questions?
Mr. Vogel, just to go and briefly summarize. Everything that you just said previously, if the school's project is built as proposed at this stage, will it meet or exceed all U D O requirements?
Yes, it will.
And I want to point you to another standard of the S U P review section and ten point four point ten L one. The proposed specialty use will not materially endanger the public safety. Do you have an opinion as to that standard?
I do. This building, again, is the courtyard design encapsulate these encapsulates most of the activity of the school within the courtyard itself. The building is setback over two hundred feet from the street. We're in an area that already has a an established church and will soon have another church as a by right beside of it. It is a fitting use within this area.
Mr. Vogel, I believe you have some drawings or renderings of what the school project will look like in these next couple of slides.
We do.
Do you want to go through those?
Sure.
Can I ask one question? I seem to miss where you address this two point six point three, the watershed protect protected overlay district. I don't see that in your sections, and it is in the protected area.
Two point six point three is the watershed.
Protected density overlay district.
I don't have that in my notes here.
You impacted it is in that watershed.
Right, so the.
It is the watershed four.
Sorry, what was that?
It's in watershed four, and that's not been addressed. Would you like to address it now?
Something you'll be talking about any? Looking at my civil engineer.
Watershed four.
You have not addressed that that.
Would you share what that watershed overlay district requirements are?
Couple pages.
I feel certain that we would address that at the time of construction, construction drawings. I mean, this site is considered low density, under twenty four percent built upon area at its post-development stage. Therefore, I I would imagine as a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina that we would meet all watershed overlay district regulations.
Okay, and you're including. Okay, there's two parcels to that. Okay. I'll put that in the conditions list.
Thank you. That should be a fine.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I have to put it in the conditions list because it's not fully outlined.
Addressed.
Tags are.
While we're on this topic, are there any other U D O requirements that have not been met or?
That includes the hundred foot buffer for the vegetative portion that needs to be shown as well as part of that district.
Anything else besides that?
Not that I can tell.
So the two things I missed, I feel pretty good, actually. Tried to summarize. Oh, yeah, the building. Thank you. The elevations, if you would leave renderings. So these are the renderings that we've generated that that give the flavor of what Hall Christian Association or Hall Christian Schools, Hall River Christian Association Academy, H R C A. I've used up my words for today, sorry. These give the flavor of what H R C A is after classical detailing. You see the the use of brick, painted trim, the columns at the the drop off areas here and the cupola on the top there. This this would be the the building phase one A, the one that faces the street, setback two hundred feet from the street. And go to the next one. Again, getting a little bit more of a feel of what this would look like from the from a street area. We're still a little close. And the next to show kind of the overall campus. There you go. The phase one A building being to the lower left, phase one B is the upper left. Then the future phase buildings are shown as another classroom building, lower lower right, the chapel in the middle, and then the gymnasium in the in the rear. I think that's all of them. Oh, there's one more. Spun around to the back with the gym and the lower left and the building in the upper right.
Have any further questions, Mr. Vogel, unless the board does?
Job. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to go ahead and call Mr. Garrett Neal, civil engineer.
Good evening again.
Neil, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Garrett Neal, one zero seven South Salisbury Street, Lexington, N C, two seven two nine two.
And just go over your experience, where you work, what you do, what your role was in this project.
Sure. Our firm specializes in commercial site design, stormwater design, utility design. In this particular project, we assisted the Vogel Firm and Retsch and Companies on our site-specific portions of of this conceptual S U P design.
And you're a licensed engineer, though?
Yes, sir. I'm a licensed professional engineer, license number zero five seven seven six two.
And have you previously been recognized as a legal expert, whether in court or at a board hearing, just like with the board sitting in a quasi judicial capacity?
Yes, earlier this year, in fact, in another charter school.
And as part of your profession, you're generally familiar with the building fire and other safety codes that's applicable to this project?
Yes, sir.
And you're also familiar with the town's development regulations?
I am.
And if I can go and point you to exhibit F of our notebook and as well as the board?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go ahead and enter in exhibit F and Mr. Neal's resume. And I'd also like to offer Mr. Neal as a qualified expert in the field of civil engineering and site design. So, Mr. Neal, I know there are some questions asked to staff by the board, which I can pause and let them go and ask, but just generally go over the utilities and the stormwater pond.
Yes, sir. So.
Let's just start there.
Sure. Let's start with septic. That that would be attracted to the board. On the septic design front, we subcontracted with soil scientists to complete a preliminary soil evaluation of the site area. Those conditions came back very favorable. So we we were able to verify the G I S data that was mentioned. We have a preliminary soil map that we utilize to identify these areas. They're not pie in the sky, if you will. They are based on a preliminary soil evaluation signed by a licensed soil scientist. We've identified that front front yard area, if we can label it that, as our dispersal area. Long-term acceptance rates, which are the new term for a perk perk test loading rate, have not yet been identified. That will be an item in the in the final design. But for now, you know, like most schools, we expect pre-treatment of some sort to reduce the high strength waste. At schools, you have a lot of kids going to the bathroom. That's you don't have much water usage. You have a lot of kids going to the bathroom. So pre-treatment in today's technology is used to reduce the strength of that waste, a very common in the septic practice. The the next item of design that we intend to examine would be flow equalization. You see that oftentimes in assembly spaces such as churches, wedding venues, school settings. And what that does is holds wastewater in tank, a singular tank or multiple tanks, and evenly disperses that into the septic field throughout the day. There might be a a three A M dispersal so that it is dividing up to not overburden or over overbear in the dispersal area. There will be hydraulic analysis as pointed out by N C eighteen E rules, because our septic system will likely have more than three thousand gallons per day. One strength of the septic design is Hall River Christian Academy currently operates as a school. What better place to get existing flow data to base our design from? Obviously, there will be conservative approaches to that, but we will start there. We will obtain Hall River Christians Academy's water bills to see how much water they're currently using. Again, this is all preliminary. I feel as a professional engineer that onsite septic is very viable here and have no concerns over the related to the feasibility or safety compromise related to the septic design of this school. Are there any questions on the the septic design before moving on to the fire pond?
What was the name of that system that's used to meter the flow?
Flow equalization. It's it's more of a of a style or an approach, not necessarily a specific system type.
Is it pressurized or?
It is, yes. That's how you dose the system through through a series of pumps.
Well, we're at the septic topic, well placement. Have you talked about that?
Yeah, I mean, generally well placement fifty feet away from 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 a dispersal area, I believe. We're well well away from that. There will be a well sub consultant that will verify the the water demand as we get into construction documents. We have identified the need for that, but at this point, we we aren't there yet.
Have you done a cost analysis of hooking up water, county water or tri river water?
We have. I was copied on a series of of emails. I didn't personally do that cost benefit now, benefit analysis, but I know it was it was done. Yes, sir.
Yeah, one thing on the septic. When this is designed, is it and you you said you were going to take the water sample, I mean, water bills from the the current at what one hundred and eighty students, your septic will be designed for five hundred students?
Yes, we we will conservatively take those on a per student unit rate, multiply that out times five hundred students plus any additional staff, plus say if there's a gym use. I mean, the most conservative dense packed out school, field day, graduation and fire drill all happens at the same time.
Thank you.
You know, we're asking these questions for the health and safety of your students. We want we want them safe.
Yes, sir. Moving to the fire pond. The fire pond was examined from a volume standpoint at this point. So we know that that area shown on the plan will hold a certain volume of water needed to fight a fire at the preliminary design level. What is still left to study is infiltration rates, as was pointed out earlier. And if the infiltration rate is too high, which means water is leaking through soil, then we'll add a liner. And then it it's an impermeable liner. It cannot leak at that point. From there, we would study evaporation. If evaporation is too high, we'll add a storage tank. And I say that to say like we're we're proceeding through a flow chart, if you will, of how this fire can be. This fire pond can and will work. As a professional engineer licensed in North Carolina, I feel that this fire pond will work to serve Hall River Christian Academy. Are there any additional questions related to the fire pond?
Would the fire pond have a dry hydro?
We haven't got to that point. There were a couple email exchanges with the fire marshal. And the design team was super relieved to know that he was familiar with this type of firefighting reservoir. Not sure if there would be like a dry F T C or something, likely not, because there are no sprinkler to backfeed it. So, you know, there would be likely a pressurized component to, you know, produce the fire flow needed for firefighting. Yes, sir. Here are no other questions. I yield my time to Brady.
At this time, we'd like to go and call Ronald Stevenson, traffic engineer with D R M P Incorporated.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Ronald Stevenson with D R M P, address is five eight zero eight Fairing Place in Raleigh.
Mr. Stevenson, just briefly explain your profession, who you work for, and your years of experience.
Sure, I have. I've been practicing traffic engineering and transportation planning for about twenty five years. I have been with D R M P for about twenty four years. And I have been involved and authored numerous or hundreds of traffic impact studies for various types of development projects and projects across the state of North Carolina, including dozens and dozens of of school projects.
And you're obviously a licensed engineer, is that right?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the upstate of North Carolina.
And have you previously been recognized as an expert in a legal proceeding, either in court or for a local board sitting in a quasi judicial capacity?
I have numerous times.
And and going to our exhibit notebook there. And, and going to our exhibit notebook there specifically exhibit G, is that a copy of your resume, sir?
It is.
I'd like to go ahead and enter in exhibit G, Mr. Stevenson's resume. And I would also like to offer Mr. Stevenson as a qualified expert in the field of traffic energy engineering. So, Mr. Stevenson, are you familiar with the concept design plan of the school as shown in the SUP application?
I am.
And based on the school's plan, do you perform an analysis of the impact that the school will have on the traffic in the immediate area that this project is built?
We did, that was accomplished through the preparation of the traffic impact analysis report.
And that's in the SUP application, is that right?
That is correct.
And specifically on pages sixty-five through two fifty-five, is that right?
Yes.
So it's a very short report, right?
They typically are.
And you have done actually TIA reports for a school project before.
I have, yeah, dozens and dozens of schools.
Is HRCA school project in this case, CI is required?
It, it is required, it will be, it is required in order to get the approvals we would need from the NC DOT for driveway permits. So it, it was, it was required.
Okay, so there's no certain threshold of the traffic count that triggers the TIA or it's just like okay.
It, it can vary, but schools typically are looked at from a traffic impact standpoint.
And I guess just going through to the extent that you can in those over two hundred pages, could you just kind of go through your report, explain it, the methodology, summarize for the board and down it down all those two hundred pages for us?
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll try to be brief with it, but the, the traffic impact analysis prepared for schools is done in coordination with town and NC DOT. And actually, NC DOT has a group within the Department of Transportation that focuses exclusively on schools. And so there are several folks in that group that do nothing but school projects essentially analyzing schools, reviewing these traffic studies like ours, and even working with schools on ways to improve the traffic operations of their facilities. So we work very closely with that group throughout the traffic impact analysis project. And the way these traffic impact studies are done is we, in this case, we went to the existing school, took traffic counts, measured stacking, all those kinds of things that relate to transportation. And then we project that forward to the future enrollment of the school. And we're able to get a really good idea of how many parents are coming to the facility, staff, everything that's going on there, how they stack, traffic's going to flow at the campus, and we're able to look at that and analyze how that's going to work. As part of the TIA and the approval from NC DOT, you'll notice that there's a recommendation to provide a left-hand turn lane on NC ninety-two. And that was identified as part of the traffic impact analysis report. There's also a recommendation to evaluate or monitor the intersection at NC eighty-seven and NC ninety-two to determine if a traffic signal is warranted there. So those, those recommendations for improvements or potential improvements came from the analysis in the traffic impact study.
You've mentioned those recommendations, they're actually in the agenda packet, staff referred to on the presentation, but specifically exhibit H and exhibit I, those were, I guess, comments and feedback from NC DOT, as I know.
They were not, let me address exhibit H, which is the letter from NC DOT dated October fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. That particular letter, I think, would address one of the questions earlier about the improvements and DOT constructing the improvements. But that, that letter that DOT provides in exhibit H is utilized to provide reimbursement to the school for the, the transportation improvements listed in that letter. So the way the process works is the school would initially have to fund those or build those improvements, then NC DOT will reimburse them for that. That's the purpose of the letter in exhibit H, is it spells out the improvements for which NC DOT will reimburse the school for.
It's a left-hand turn improvement.
It is a left-hand turn lane on NC ninety-two, and you'll also notice in that, that there is a potential signal, traffic signal in NC eighty-seven, NC ninety-two, so those are improvements.
Until, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Paul, yes. When you say potential, do you mean to be determined later depending on traffic or?
Yes.
And who makes that decision?
We'll have to coordinate with NC DOT on that, NC DOT will not, any road improvements, you know, they all want to maintain the roads. And so we can't do anything without them approving or allowing us to do it. So they're going to be involved in this to say, we think the traffic's there, put the signal in. And they, you know, they need to be involved in it because obviously they're going to reimburse, they'll have to reimburse the school for that if the school does put that in.
In that topic of this NC DOT letters, exhibit I, is there anything noted to be of the October twentieth date? Letter that you have in our, that's a positive.
That's, that's essentially the letter that DOT provides, that says they reviewed the TIA, and here's, and it spells out the improvements that they feel are necessary. So it, it is those same improvements we just mentioned, but the reason that's on a different cover letter, a different letterhead is that the, the letter in exhibit H essentially says the same thing. That's the letter that is used for reimbursement for those improvements. But they do, they do spell out these same improvements.
I'll go ahead and enter in exhibit H and, please. Can you take us through the ingress and egress in terms of the plan of the site, will you just describe that a little bit?
Sure, yeah, the, so there's two driveways, as you've seen on the, on the plan. And the, the way the traffic flow would work for this is the traffic would enter into the, there we go. There we go, yeah, that, yes, perfect. So the, the traffic would enter into the eastern or northeasternmost driveway, which is kind of page right here. They'll enter in that, circulate clockwise through the, through the site. And then they'll exit at the western or southwestern driveway onto NC ninety-two.
So is this ingress and egress designed to minimize congestion on the public streets, probably more particularly high-end infrastructure?
It is, and as I said, we, we work this, this traffic pattern out with NC DOT.
Now, in your expert opinion, does your proposed ingress and egress or any other additional traffic coming from the school's project pose a danger to the public safety?
It, it does not.
And can you go over the stacking for this project?
Sure, and again, I'll reference the exhibit, I think on, on the screen, I think it's easier to follow. But as I said, following that traffic pattern of entering the eastern driveway, northeastern driveway, circulating clockwise around the site, the available stacking is illustrated primarily in the red arrows that you see on the, on the screen. And one of the, one of the, one of the primary considerations for a school is the stacking. And, and one of the reasons NC DOT is so heavily involved in these schools is they want to make sure that the stacking that the school will generate can be contained on the campus. And, and as, as we all can, can imagine, we don't want traffic stacking out onto the public streets. And so the, as part of the traffic impact study, we did identify a, a future buildout of the school campus, a future buildout, the maximum queuing for the school would be, I think it was just over two thousand feet. And so what we're planning for with this plan, we have planned to accommodate over two thousand feet of stacking on this campus, which would accommodate full buildout of the, of school. One thing I will say about that number, it is, it's a big number, you know, but DOT, what DOT looks at is they take, the NC DOT takes data at schools across the state, they collect a lot of data. And one of the primary things they're collecting is not just numbers of cars, but it's how far they stack on, on the school campus. So they take that and they break it down into a typical stacking, so what you would expect on a normal day. And then they have what they call a high demand factor that they apply to that. So they have, they have taken enough data at schools across the state to determine that on very high demand days, that average stacking that you would expect could be up to thirty percent higher. And so that's where that number, the two thousand feet comes from, we don't expect that to happen every day. But NC DOT has said, we want to accommodate that maximum queuing that we would expect here. We want to accommodate that onsite, and so that's where, that's what the two thousand feet is for this, it's that high. They call it a high demand day, a very unusual day, but they determine it's about thirty percent higher than the typical day. So we're accommodating that on our campus.
So if I can, I, I just need to understand this. So if you take that drawing you have there, the conceptual drawing, you have, without the easement, you have a U-shaped, a U-shaped automobile movement from east side to west side, and then left or right turn out of there. If you add then also the, the green, the green dot, would that add up in square, in, in not square feet, but linear feet to two thousand feet?
That would be over two thousand feet.
Okay, can you give me a, it's over.
The, it's, it's right at, again, if you look at just the red lines over here, the red lines, if you add ups, where the red lines, where it goes around sort of page left, if you will, by the future phase, you know, building, there's, there's two lines there, if you add those two lines up back to NC ninety-two, that's about two thousand feet.
Anybody else from the board have any stacking access?
Yeah, Mr. Stevenson, were any scenarios examined of, of future where some fraction of the students arrive by bus?
We didn't, we didn't evaluate that, just in talking with the school and the future plans of what we, how we think it's going to go. Also, one of the reasons we typically wouldn't do that for schools is that we're, if there's buses, there's usually fewer parent trips, which means there's usually fewer cars. And so we, we're sort of accommodating, what we're trying to do here is accommodate the worst-case scenario. So that's what we're, we're looking at here, and that's one reason NC DOT feels that it's appropriate to do so for this particular case.
So maybe it's more of a question for the architecture team, where, where that might happen.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly accommodate that, and, and just the additional parking lot we've talked about, kind of showing a green here, just gives a lot of flexibility, you know, for things in the future as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you. So right now, you have a total student population of a hundred and eighty at the Gum Springs school. Can you tell me how you came up with a hundred and twenty-nine students entering? Or tell me how you came up with the parents' trip versus just total students?
There's a couple of, there's a couple of things we look at. One is, we can take the, in this particular case, it's a, it's an existing school. We went out and counted all the traffic at that school, you know, where they were dropping off, what building they're dropping off, to try to determine what grade levels and how many cars are associated with each grade level, you know, at, at the school. And so we have that data, but we also have data, as I mentioned, that NC DOT utilizes across the entire state. They, they go collect all this data. And one of the things that they do break down in that data is the number of student drivers and the number of parent drivers, as well as the number of staff buses, so they have all this data for schools like this. It's sort of a formula based on all, all the data they collect across the state.
It's terrible.
Absolutely.
Since there's a bit of a positive reaction here, you know, staff brought it up that the town or via the NC DOT changed the truck route since the TIA was. Now, obviously, if that was something that was addressed, we knew about much earlier, that would have been addressed in TIA. But could you just sort of address that change and how that could be, you know, addressed with our application here? And what impact that would have if that happened?
Well, I think first of all, I'll, I'll point out that the, the, the traffic study has some additional traffic kind of projections built in to it for the future. Now, while that may not have been necessarily in response to the change in the truck route, there's extra traffic built into our traffic study. But obviously, in coordination with NC DOT, you know, they're well aware of this and that this is happening. And I, I can't speak necessarily for them as to how that played, how and if that played into their decision to provide recommendations such as installing a traffic signal. But, so I don't want to speak for them, but they are aware of it, we've had coordination with them about this and the future, you know, traffic patterns in the area. And they, you know, they have taken all that into account in the letters that they provided for improvements.
And also, that could be something that could be addressed as a condition that we go and update our TIA report to reflect that truck traffic change within a certain amount of time, is that right?
I would just say we could if required by NC DOT.
So if we just, we just shaped that traffic pattern to avoid traffic around our circle. So a lot of trucks from three M now are, are, are avoiding that, that inner circle there, it's a beautiful place. Are you saying that that has been included, that, that truck traffic is now included in this, or you're going to revise it?
What I'm saying, it, it, it's not specifically accounted for in the TIA. So not specifically, we said X number of new trucks, you know, become by, by this area. But what I did want to point out is we do add traffic in our TIA to account for various changes that could happen, you know, on the roads in the future. So while it's not specifically trucks, we do have extra kind of traffic built into our models to handle future changes and increases to traffic in the area, not trucks specifically. What we were saying is that if NC DOT would like us to update the traffic study, that we would, we would have to do so. I personally, my opinion is they will not make us do that, ask us to do that, but we're certainly happy to do so if NC DOT feels it's appropriate to do so.
I'd like to ask some questions about those scenarios, because the DOT letter, as I recall, said that there would be monitoring of the intersection of eighty-seven and ninety-two for potential need for improvements there. Are you familiar with, A, are you familiar with the AADT on ninety-two? And B, are you familiar with those numbers at that intersection on eighty-seven and ninety-two by chance?
Yeah, I'll, I can, I can address the, in, in terms of the potential for the traffic signal. So I am familiar with the traffic at, at both of those roads and at the intersection. The way, the, the reason DOT words, words, the recommendation as, I'll read it. Monitor NC eighty-seven, NC ninety-two for signalization. So the word monitor means they want to keep an eye on it to see if it is warranted. They can go out and do that themselves, you know, they have staff in their office that goes out and they do this all the time in their offices where they go out and take counts or they go look at it and they say, we think this traffic signal is needed. If it is, they could put it in on their own, but they may, you know, come to the school and say, identify it in the TIA. If I in the T I A wants you guys to, you know, move forward with putting this in. Now, they have to pay for it anyway, but it, it would, uh, they could put it in on their own. Uh, or they could have the school put it in and reverse the school for it. But what I think, what, what typically happens with. Schools, and this is why you don't see a lot of times. Recommendation is part of any school to say install a traffic signal. Is that the school will add traffic to that intersection. For about two hours of the day and then other times of the day, the school is going to have very little, relatively little impact on that intersection. And what D O T likes to do is D O T does not. They would prefer to install a traffic signal when it's needed for multiple hours of the day, many hours of the day. And not just for one or two hours of the day. And so, uh, I think that's why I can't sit here and tell you that I think the signal is going to go in. I think what's going to happen is, um, and you probably seen this, uh, in the presentation earlier about sort of the. The ramping up, you know, of the school and you see the phasing on the, on the diagram. We and D O T will have some time to keep an eye on this to see when we add a little traffic here when the, uh, school opens. We'll see how that intersection works. And as future, um, students are added to the school campus, we may have to put a signal in. You know, if we add more traffic, you know, to the intersection. Uh, but there's, there's going to be a period of sort of building up towards the ultimate enrollment. Where there will be time to look at that to determine if it's, if it's need, needed or needs to go in. It would, I, I, I can tell you that, uh, technically. There will be enough traffic at that intersection to meet the warrants for a signal for two hours of the day. Beyond that, you know, it's, it's sort of a, that's where D O T's kind of judgment is going to come in as to whether they want to. Want to put the signal in to handle the other hours of the day. So that, I, I know that's not a great definitive answer, but it's, um. It's something that we're going to have to monitor. And in this case, we are going to have some time to monitor that as the school, uh, increases student enrollment.
And, and so the average annual daily traffic on nine oh two today and post-project arc?
It was, I can look it up. I think it was around three thousand cars a day, if I remember right, uh, around three thousand cars a day. Um, after the project, the school, the, the actual. The school doesn't necessarily generate a lot of traffic over a whole day. It really comes in two, you know, two waves. So it, it adds, um. Some traffic there, but I, it's probably more like four thousand, you know, ballpark, four thousand cars a day. Uh, you know, with that, there'll be some other traffic that'll be added there, you know, over probably, you know, uh, over the next several years. Um, but it's, those are the kind of the, the, the ballpark numbers of the, of the traffic.
Julie, we've had some, uh, interactions with residents around your school, both school. And that's probably the biggest issue with the folks on nine oh two and around, uh, the, the, the school. So it's, it's a concern.
But that's one of, one of the reasons the left turn lane is, is required there to sort of get that traffic.
All right.
Yeah, get the, keep the traffic flowing on N C nine oh two and sort of minimizing the disruption to, uh, the traveling public on N C nine oh two.
So if, if you were to, uh, address a neighbor, how would you reassure their concerns about increase of traffic?
Well, I, uh, uh, like I said, I've done school studies, uh, all over the state and I, there, there's not. Uh, a school, this is no et cetera, not a school that's not going to add traffic to the road. I mean, that, that's just what it's going to do. That traffic, that traffic that's added is during a relatively short period of time. Uh, I'm sure we all in our commutes, you know, every day, um, know kind of where schools. You know, traffic is and when, when to sort of avoid it and. And, uh, what times that sort of, you know, kind of, there's a little bit of congestion there. There's going to be a little bit of traffic there. During those two times of the day, there's just no way, if anybody tells you that school doesn't generate traffic, they're not telling you truth. But there is going to be traffic there and, and it's going to, it, it's going to, um. It, because of the nature of that traffic coming in and out in about thirty or forty-five minutes, you know, period, it's going to be noticeable there. So the neighbors will notice it. I'm not going to say it's not going to be noticeable. There will be noticeable. Uh, during those times of the day. The good news is in the afternoons. Um, the school traffic typically peaks around three o'clock P M, which is, which is kind of off-peak for rush hour. Uh, the typical rush hour. In the morning, it does coincide with that. So, uh, there'll probably be a little more. I would call it friction or, uh. Noticeable traffic increase in the mornings for morning commute hours. But as I said, the traffic pattern that we've identified for the school. Uh, will help that traffic flow to be better, minimize any congestion on N C nine oh two. And the, the left-hand turn lane that will be provided will do the same thing. It'll minimize, uh, the congestion on N C nine oh two. So the through, through, through traffic there should have minimal, as minimal as possible, uh, disruption or impact.
What of the specific concern that perhaps, uh. Something goes awry with the flow of traffic on the site? And the left turn lane, uh, starts to stack. Can you speak about that potential concern?
Well, one of the things we have looked at is how long that turn lane, uh, needs to be. And that, that is one of the things we do is we're looking at the worst-case scenario. Uh, so that turn lane was identified to be two hundred and fifty feet, you know, in length. Um, when you, when you go to, when we go to actually design it. It'll end up being a little bit longer because of the N C D O T standards for how the turn lanes are laid out. So you end up getting a little bit more stacking, um, than that in the design, but it is designed to handle the longest. Uh, longest stacking that you would have there. So as long as we can keep the traffic moving. Um, on the site, you know, as we're planning to do, uh, that, that shouldn't, that should not be an issue.
If not, at this moment, just to. Summarize, bring it all back in terms of your board and your opinion. Testimony that you gave today here, Mr. Stevenson, is based on your training and experience. Going to the S U P standard number, uh, one. Do you have an opinion of whether the school will or will not materially endanger the public health or safety if developed as proposed as it pertains to traffic coming to and from the school?
Um, I do have an opinion and it, it, it will not, uh, endanger the health and safety of the public.
Do you have an opinion as to where the schools ingress and egress access to the site and stacking for the school meets all N C D O T? And town video requirements?
Um, I, I do have an opinion and it, it does meet all the requirements.
Unless the board has any, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Stevens. Thank you. And with that, I do have, and I hate to go and do this, but it was because. It was addressed in Pete Vogel's testimony. I would just like to call Mr. Yeah. Yeah. I'm going to call up Pete Vogel just real, real quick. There was a, a question posed by staff about the watershed that was not addressed.
Actually, can we get that? Yeah, so, Mr. Neal, um, the question was, does the project comply with the watershed protection overlay district? And we've got the Pittsburgh U D O section two point six point three, uh. Out. Have you had a chance to review this?
I have.
Okay, and subsection D says, uh, lot coverage, maximum lot coverage for non-residential multifamily development. Is twenty-four percent if there is a curb and gutter system or thirty-six percent without a curb and gutter system. Um, and you've read that, that standard?
I have.
And what that's saying is that's the maximum allowable impervious surface, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and just to make sure we're all on the same page, when we say impervious surface, I know that's a defined term. That's generally. Surface that doesn't allow water to drain into the, um, into the ground.
That's correct. Building roofs, sidewalks, parking, drive aisles, gravel and the like.
Okay, and, and is it your opinion that, uh, the project as proposed will meet this standard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, are there any other questions about the watershed protection, uh, standard at this time? Thank you very much, Mr. Neal.
Question to staff, does that answer your, your concern?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll go ahead and call, uh, Mr. Nicholas Kirkland. Mr. Kirkland, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, my name is Nicholas Kirkland. My address is nine four zero eight Northfield Court in Raleigh.
And could you just describe what you do, uh, your experience and certifications?
Yeah, I'm a state certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina, which is the highest, uh, rank in appraising you can get through the state. I also hold that same, um, certification in seven other states. I've been accepted as an expert in property value impacts before this board and other courts like it, um. Through the state level and for actual court, at this point, probably three hundred times or so, give or take. Um, and we regularly provide testimony and for developments and. Representing neighbors as well against development where the research shows that, uh, as well as doing typical, um, real estate appraisals.
So it's fair to say you have. And, um, in looking at the exhibit, our exhibit notebook, specifically exhibit J, if I will point your. Point you to that exhibit as well as the board, is that your resume?
Yes, it is.
I'll go ahead and enter exhibit J to the record. And I'll also give Mr. Kirkland a qualified expert in the field of land valuation and a certified appraiser. So, Mr. Kirkland, have you had a chance to go and review, um, the school's proposed plans that's in the S U P application?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the project in this location?
Yes.
And I'll point you to the town of Pittsburgh's special use permit review standard, specifically section ten point four. Point ten L three has required finding that the special use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property. Are you familiar with that standard?
Yes.
And did you prepare an impact study based on that standard?
Yes.
And if you look at exhibit K of our exhibit notebook, point that to the board. Is that a true and accurate copy of your property impact report?
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and enter in Mr. Kirkland's, uh, property impact report, exhibit K into the record. Now, Mr. Kirkland, just sort of briefly summarize what you did, what the report said, um, methodology used, the source information. All of those things that go into, uh, rendering nothing.
Sure. So what we were asked to do was to determine whether or not the proposed development. Would have an impact on adjoining or nearby property values. If so, what would that impact be? And also if we were able to provide any information about the harmony of where this is proposed to be located. So to start, what we did is we just looked for similar comparable schools and identified. What's next to those and how does that compare to what's proposed right here? Uh, what we found is that typically, uh, a rural school like this is going to have. Some houses next to it. It's a very common thing for there to be some low-density residential or even some subdivisions next to the schools. Or in some cases, developed after the schools were already there. Uh, oftentimes, they also adjoin religious facilities. And for the proposed use, this is very consistent with residential uses just across the street. And a religious facility posed on one side and existing on the other. Um, so at least in terms of the harmony where it's proposed. Uh, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use would be harmonious in its location, given that. Comparable school facilities have very similar mixes of adjoining uses. But in order to determine whether or not there would be an actual impact to adjoining property values. Uh, we've used a methodology called a matched pair or paired sale. So this involves comparing a home that's sold to another nearby home. Um, and the importance is we're trying to measure if the first home is next to a similar comparable school. Is it selling for more, less, or about the same as that house that's next to the school? In other words, are active market participants paying the same amount or a different amount for a property? Uh, located directly next to a school just like what's proposed right here. Uh, so what we've done is we've found examples of homes that have sold right next to existing schools in the area. And they are showing that there's no significant difference in what's being paid. Due to the, being adjacent to the school. In other words, homes in the market area next to comparable rural schools. Are selling for similar values as other homes right nearby that were also on the market at the same time that. Are not next to the school, uh, which is strong support that the proposed school will not impact adjoining or nearby residential uses. Uh, and if it would be helpful, since I know you just got this, I could briefly walk through an example of one of these within the impact study. If that would be helpful for you. Sure. So if you turn to page ten in the impact study, you'll see that it's labeled comparable three orange high school. And this is going to be, uh, fairly high level, but. We identified the home that sold right next door in the second paragraph there. And, uh, you can read the physical description of that home. However, it sold for approximately ninety-eight dollars a square foot. But the following three paragraphs outline three other nearby houses that also sold in a similar timeframe. And these range in prices per square foot after adjustments for differences in time of when it sold, which month. Uh, financing concessions and things of that sort. Uh, for the comparables were at ninety-one dollars a square foot, ninety-eight and ninety-six. Again, the one right next to the school was at ninety-eight. So in an area where the homes that are most comparable after adjustments are selling for ninety-one to ninety-eight dollars a square foot. The home that backs right up to the school selling for ninety-eight dollars a square foot is indicative of it selling for market value. And it looks like towards the high end of that value, but certainly not being impacted for being adjacent to the school. That is the type of analysis that we've done throughout this. And what we found is that. The homes adjacent to this proposed, uh, school facility are at similar distances. To the other schools that we looked at in the area. And therefore, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining properties. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about what we've done.
Any questions from the board?
Out of this section.
Thank you.
You already answered. Question, you need an expert opinion. Post-school will not substantially injure value of adjoining properties. There's an, the other, um. S U P ordinance standard, section ten point four, point ten L four has required finding that the special use. Is in general harmony with the intensity scale and character of the development. Existing or planned in the surrounding area. Are you familiar with this standard?
Yes.
And in your report, you say that the post-school is consistent and compatible with existing uses and thus is harmonious with location and surrounding property uses. What's the basis for that opinion, Mr. Kirkland?
Uh, the basis was, as I had described earlier, comparable school facilities. Uh, in the nearby area have a similar mix of adjoining uses. They have a similar distance from the. Adjoining residential uses to these, uh, school structures. And therefore, it's my professional opinion that the proposed schools will be in harmony where proposed to be located.
And then is it also common in your profession, not only provide of, of an opinion as to impact of property values? But also as it pertains to the harmony standard?
Uh, yes.
I have no further questions unless the board does.
And next we'd like to call Mr. Reynolds.
We have a, an announcement from one of the board members.
Me. I was approached by a concerned citizen. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that it was not under oath, uh, it was right during the break. And it was my own mission to actually listen and converse with this person. And, uh, I want everyone in the room to be assured that, that, that conversation will not affect my decision-making process today. And again, I apologize for the, the oversight.
Thank you, Commissioner Foley. Resume.
And, and with that, before calling our next witness, uh, during the break, we realized we just had some clarifying information we want to get to you all and very quickly, Mr. Stevenson, so let him go.
I'm, I'm just going to clarify two things, two points. Number one, the, um, improved road improvements to be, uh, constructed, uh, specifically the left-hand turn lane of NC 902. That improvement is going to be constructed by the school. And then NC DOT would reimburse the school for that, uh, for that, the cost of that improvement um, at a later date. Um, second, uh, second, uh, item I want to clarify was a question about potential buses. Um, there are no buses and there's no intention, you know, at this point to have, uh, buses or operate buses at the, uh, school site. I don't think I addressed that clearly either. Those are two points of clarification. Thank you.
Our next witness would like to go ahead and call, uh, Reynolds Neely. Mr. Neely, just say your name and your address for the record.
Yes, that's Ryan Reynolds Neely, Jr., seven oh three Sunset Avenue, Ashboro, North Carolina.
And just go through your experience and your trade and your expertise.
Um, I started working for the city of Ashboro in nineteen seventy-seven. I retired in, uh, basically twenty twelve as the community development division director. I had fire, building inspection, uh, communications, planning, community development, um. The whole shebang, uh, was put together, uh, in the last few years as I was the director. I have also continued to consult with local governments around, uh, the area. Um, I just retired in, uh, twenty-four as the, uh, own call planner for the town of Liberty. Um, and there's a connection there. Liberty hired one of your people to take over after I convinced them that with everything going on in Liberty, that they needed a full-time person and not an old broken down planner that was needing to retire. So, uh, they brought J D Phelps on and, um, they have a bright future in Liberty. And so does Pittsburgh. I love Pittsburgh. I come down at least once a month. I am sad that Posta Fish has closed. It was one of my favorite restaurants.
And Mr. Reynolds, or Mr. Neely, um, ha- honestly, you've had experience being up in front of boards just like this.
Yes.
Former planner, but have you ever testified as an expert in court or in, uh, board hearing as a positive official?
Yes, sir. I have been, uh, doing consulting, uh, for many years. Like I said, with the town of Liberty, but also for private sector. And I have appeared in many, uh, cases just like this before boards on special use and positive inclusion here.
And looking at our exhibit notebook, specifically exhibit L, is that a copy of your?
It is.
I'd like to go ahead and enter in exhibit L to the record and all, also offer, uh, Mr. Neely as a qualified expert in the field of municipal planning. So, Mr. Neely, have you reviewed the SUP application of the school's plans?
Yes, sir.
And have you heard the testimony of the other witnesses before you?
Yes, sir.
And have you reviewed the town's UDO and as well as the town's land use plan, which is also referred to the comp plan through the SUP standard? And did you prepare a report as to required findings, SUP findings in this case, in particular, as it pertains to L four with harmony and L five consistency with the comp plan?
I did.
And did you provide an opinion as to his required findings?
I did that also.
And, and looking at exhibit M from our exhibit notebook, is that the report that you compiled?
Yes, sir.
And that report is clear and accurate?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go ahead and enter in exhibit M. So, and looking at this standard right here, uh, really proposed use, the proposed special use in general harmony with the intensity scale and character of the belt and existing or planning and surrounding area. Could you just, I guess, as a, as a former planner, expert in this field, how do you assess whether those use is in harmony with the surrounding?
I think, uh, you've heard a good example of that in a previous, uh, speaker. However, there is a, an aspect to this that, that is actually in the UDO, and that is that harmony is a functional determination. Very easy to do. It's not subjective. Uh, section ten point four, point ten is a, uh, unified development order. Actually states that it is based on intensity, scale, character. Uh, these are, uh, again, functional characteristic. For instance, is a, um, house able to be used by a house if there's a harm next to it? Um, it's, it's a functional description. Does it impair the reach of that?
So with that, and in your report, did you have an opinion as to whether the school's project will be generally in harmony with the surrounding area?
Yes, sir. It will be in harmony by strongly UDO, land development plan, and my knowledge of, uh, schools and their surroundings.
Can you just give us a ten thousand foot briefly summarized view of the basis for that opinion?
Okay, uh, I derive it from presumptions in the town of Pittsburgh's unified development orders. Uh, the land use plan, including the future land use map. Um, the location of property, the character of the use, my inspection of the property, the surrounding areas, the Hall River Christian Academy application and its proposed plan, the reports that we've heard tonight, the personal experience with schools and how they operate and function, the legal precedents, uh, from the courts that harmony is a function, uh, uh, determination. determination. Just throw all that into a pot and you come up with it.
Will you, on that latter point, the presumption, could you explain how, when harmony is presumed under the law and from a land use perspective?
Yes. The, the U D O establishes zoning districts. And in those districts, it establishes uses that are permitted, some by rights, some by special use or other mechanisms. But once the legislative determination has been made by a town to put that list together of uses, whether it's right or special use, the courts have determined that that is a presumption, that that use is in harmony with those other uses. And in, in the particular U D O for Pittsburgh, I have as an appendix to my report, a complete list of all sorts of uses that are permitted in the residential agricultural district. And they range from channels to equestrian facilities, to emergency services, to hospitals, to nursing homes. You can see that list in the back. And all those are presumed to be harmonious with each other in the way they function, scale, and intensity.
Obviously, the surrounding uses plays a factor in the harmony standard. And so here, obviously, we do have some single family residential that's near the proposed school site. Is that right?
That's correct.
But you also have non residential uses, is that right?
That's right.
Could you just elaborate a little bit more even if I get the, the record as of the adjoining uses?
Yes, we have surrounding these properties. We have, as mentioned, the school, the church that exists. We have the proposed church. We have residential structures across the street. We have some agricultural activities going on surrounding those properties, whether it's timber or just some fallow land. But there is some vacant or underutilized or possibly farmland surrounding this property. There is an easement or utility line that runs through there. And there's also some natural areas that need to be marked.
So again, to, to reiterate your opinion that's in your report that the proposed use would be in harmony, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the school site does satisfy the standard, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Now, looking at standard number five, or L five rather, those special uses in general, is generally consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and every other plans officially adopted by the town board of commissioners. You rendered an opinion as to that standard, did you not?
Yes, sir.
And could you just generally explain sort of the relationship between a comp plan, but the town calls it a land use plan, and how that relates to the U D O?
Okay, so the, the comp plan, the land use plan is a policy document. The U D O is a regulatory document. And the policy document is adopted by the commissioners to, to allow them to determine if their legislative decisions have merit and, and work under the guidelines that the policy document has developed for.
And in rendering this opinion, you reviewed the town's land use plan, is that right?
That is correct.
I'm handing you what's been marked exhibit N. Could you go and identify that for me?
This is the updated plan of, of 1023. If I'm correct, this Janie Phelps is listed as the acting director when it was adopted.
So that's the town's current land use plan, is that right? At this time, I'd like to go ahead and enter in all of the town's land use plan as exhibit. But could you just briefly go through and summarize your report of why the school is generally consistent with the town's land use plan?
Okay, that takes a lot of language. Basically, the, the land use plan has four sections. It has chapter one, two, three, and four. The first check, chapter is an introduction to the plan. It gets into providing a vision. It, it just generally discusses what the plan is going to do for the community. The second chapter is the plan development. It has the, what I call the environmental scan, where we look at demographics, population growth projections, housing types and values, household incomes, all those census type data, if you will. And then it, it brought in the community through meetings to, to create some community priorities and themes. And some of those were sewer capacity, density versus open space, regulations versus property rights, new jobs, the need for schools, housing, transportation demands, safe routes to the, to schools and other facilities, and the protection of natural resources. Those were all themes that were developed through chapter two. Chapter two also describes six planned goals for the future of the town. And these were grow strategically, collaborate, support a vibrant, energetic downtown, create opportunities to innovate, balance preservation of existing neighborhoods, and diversify housing and protect natural resources. Chapter three then creates elements. And these elements that became the kind of focus of the plan were land use and housing, infrastructure, downtown, and natural resources and conservation. The one that directly deals with this particular special use permit request is the one for land use and housing. But you can't ignore the others. A lot of, a lot of these parts of the plan would be considered not applicable or not, they don't apply in some way. But in my opinion, you can't just write them off that way. You have to say, well, is the request inconsistent with that? Or is it, is it in some way not going to support that? Is it going to be contrary to it? So instead of just writing things off in those sections of your plan where, where they don't seem to apply to a specific special use permit, I think you have to look at them. And looking at all those elements, this, this project basically meets everything in your plan, whether it's the elements or the goals and policies. It, it, it has no conflicts with those things that appear not to be applicable. It basically just checks all the boxes for collaboration and strategic infrastructure. I mean, you've got a group here that wants to build a facility, staff it, maintain it. The town doesn't have to do. That's a collaboration for facilities. It just checks all the boxes as to compliance with this plan. And then basically, the, the the U D O tells you how you approve the special use permit. And you set up the standards of the U D O. You then set up the standards for the specific special use permit. And with all this testimony we've heard, those have been satisfied. So once you do that, again, you get this presumption that you have complied with the ordinance and that you aren't consistent with the plan.
Can you speak a little bit to the future land use map, which is typically always within some sort of comp plan, land use plan, just like the town, is that right?
The future land use map is, is always part of a plan. It, it puts down the visions of the plan. It gives you a, a pictorial evidence of what the words in the plan are trying to say. So you set up the, the different sections of the community on this map. And then that is one of the key pieces to guide and develop for these elected officials to make decisions.
And the school site is identified in the future land use map as rural and conservation design, is that right?
That is correct.
And according to land use plan, this is around pages 28 and 29, under the rural and conservation design, it states that these are areas that encourages low intensity uses on large tract of land, which that's consistent with the proposed school.
Sounds persistent, yes, sir.
And in addition, it also states that that in these rural, rural, rural rural conservation design area, which require large lots or lower overall density if the new development is not connected to sewer. So again, this goes to that the school will be going and using synthetic or large tract of land. So again, that would be consistent.
And less than 24% impervious, that's, that's low. That's exactly what you're asking for.
So just to go and summarize, it's your professional opinion that proposed use is consistent with the town's land use plan?
It is my opinion, yes, sir.
And, and you also, in your report, refer to some other plans that are adopted by this board that are either not applicable or otherwise.
Yes, there's the comprehensive transportation plan 2015. There's the Parks and Recreation Master Plan 2019. There's the bicycle ped plan 2020. Then you've got the Land Records Viewer and the Natural Resources Green Growth Story Map, which I found very interesting, by the way. But all those extra pieces play in, all those things, the U D O, the plan itself, all these other things go into being what is the plan of development for the town of Pittsburgh.
So anybody have any questions? So at this time, the school doesn't have any other permanent witnesses we wish to, to call at this time. However, I do go and reserve time after the opponents have an opportunity to go and speak or, or the public rather, to be able to go and submit rebuttal, rebuttal evidence and also go and potentially call rebuttal witness and also reserve some time for closing at the end. Thank you.
Thank you for those presentations. We have several individuals which have signed up to speak in favor of the school. So I will start with them, with Ed Kelly, please. And then after Ed Kelly, it will be Jeff Hider, if you would come forward and speak at this time.
My name is Ed Kelly. I'm just here tonight as almost as a parent. I've had just a wonderful opportunity to experience my children's, my child's growth through the school. We wake up every morning and every day wanting to do the best for our children, for this town, and for building a future together. I understand why we're here. I understand sometimes growth is never easy. Change can never arrive without friction. And I want to begin by acknowledging something important, the concerns of the neighbors who live near the proposed site, and their concerns are real. Their homes, their peace, their land, those matter. They matter deeply. But you also must face another truth, our town is growing. Families come here because they feel safe. They see a thriving community, one with values, one with heart, one that invests in their children. And that growth brings our responsibility. Our River Christian Academy has been quietly shaping the character, discipline, compassion, and leadership in our children for many years. And they have earned the chance to continue doing that work. They're not only asking for this luxury, but they're also asking for them to have a space to keep raising up wonderful human beings. And I just want to say that that everybody consider how important these decisions are. That so many people are going to pass through those doors in the years to come. Doctors, lawyers, scientists. And it all starts right here. So I just ask for all your consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Embarrassingly, there was a form out there said, do I support or not? I do support, but I have no intent to speak. I, I am in full support of the school, by the way.
You're Mr. Hider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Carol Sanders, please.
Commissioner, I want to make sure they identify themselves with the dress.
We're going to call Ms. Sanders in rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay. This looks like Joshua Matty, is that correct?
Oh, I accidentally thought, I thought that was a sign.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, right. So we're going to move on then to the individuals, the opponent or those which are against the school. We'll start with Melissa Henry, if you could step forward.
No, I, I also thought the son of Chief.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine. Jim Henry?
Son of Chief's son. My name's Jim Henry. I live directly across the street, 1234 N C Highway 902, Pittsburgh, North Carolina. My property, road frontage is all within the scope of that 13 acres road frontage. The two access roads going in and around the school and exiting out, my driveway sits right between them. And so I have a concern about the traffic and listening to traffic engineer talk. But I feel like in those peak times, I'm going to have a nightmare getting out of the driveway, turning eastbound towards Pittsburgh, which I think majority of my neighbors turn that way. Not many turn right towards, towards the Goldstone. And so I don't have evidence, but I feel like that that is going to be just a nightmare for me. And no matter whether they got double stacking through there, I'm still going to be facing the increased number of vehicles heading westbound from 87 intersection down to turn in that I've got to turn against somehow and go through. And also coming, the students, the 30% or whatever in the traffic impact study that said they were going to come in, I've got to turn with them. And I just feel like that is just a situation, I don't think any of these people that do support school, and I don't blame them for supporting their school, they don't want to live across a high volume traffic intersection. I don't think nobody does, and I know that's not any evidence, but that's what my main against, our argument against it is, is that it's just, it's just going to be unbearable traffic for everybody that has to turn against the traffic. And the increased traffic through 2030 and 2035 is just going to increase. And secondly, because I now I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, you're creating three church related buildings in that area, which is fine. Is, you're effectively changing the zoning from rural agricultural or residential agricultural, rural and conservation to institutional and, and, and office buildings right there across the street from me. And I just, I just disagree with that.
Next, you have Tim Collins.
Evening, my name's Tim Collins. I live across from this prop, proposed development. I'm still not convinced there's no impact to road safety. The stretch of road has been identified as being a high frequency crash location of the town of Pittsburgh, comprehensive transport plan, which is published some years ago. This was made in coordination with the Department of Transport. This plan identifying it as hazardous. The eastbound and westbound approaches to this school land are on blind curves. Then you wouldn't have a good appreciation once you went towards them. I'm personally aware of four deaths within 700 feet in the front of my property or the adjoining properties in question here. In addition, NC DOT accident analysis over a 0.7 mile stretch show that there's an average of four accidents a year. The absolute, the vehicle stacking, the drop offs, pickup times. I'm questioning how I'm questioning how emergency vehicles could get to a point around that stacking area should there be an emergency? Because you've got two lanes of vehicles. The D O T report indicates future turn lanes. This will put us risk as I would need to get out of my driveway crossing two lanes. One, a stacking lane in the middle. Let me quick. The D O T report admits the church traffic impact on the S U P in their traffic analysis. Now, I understand that's been made permissible. But it's also some vague area here, but they've been referencing back and forth this car park as being in church lane, being used by the school, and it's somewhat vague to me, but I understand. Additionally, the impact of Highway 15501 has been, quickly, the official reroute of this does not been reflected in this report. Data was collected before the study was made. 15501 was overburdened through Pittsburgh, so that traffic can't be just a marginal increase where the D O T, I understand, allows a 3% margin. And I stand off the allowance there. There's no land allowance for these D O T turn lanes, so the D O T states that the right-of-way would allow this. But the right-of-way would have to be replaced, and that adds to land loss from the neighbors. And it would, yeah, so also it doesn't take into account your future Pittsburgh plans for bike or recreational footpaths. That's not taken into account. So if any land needs to be taken, it should be planned into the plans right now. I hope you consider my considerations. I'm trying to get it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, we have a gentleman's come up. We would simply object to Mr. Collins' testimony coming in for traffic safety purposes. He's not qualified as an expert.
But I have a statement here by the Department of Transport.
I'm not trying to argue with you.
All right. Mr. Collins, do you have the study that you're referencing? Please give it to our clerk. If, if there's one that you were referencing, please give it to our clerk. I know you're not an expert.
For due process reasons, we need to be entitled to copy and examine it.
I've never seen it, and we'd object to it coming in without being both as an expert and a scholar.
It all requires expert testimony and what you're best fine to.
What did it have, please?
And if I could, I'd like to distinguish, the gentleman came before, the gentleman came before said, the gentleman who spoke before said, I live here. I'm concerned because I'm right in between the driveways. So he's speaking as lay witness about facts that he can testify to. Mr. Collins, however, has talked to you about traffic safety, about reports and studies. He's not been qualified in that respect. And that's the basis of our objection of his testimony and also of his evidence coming into the record.
Anything that he tries to do.
I'll reiterate that we object to anything that he enters into the record as well as his testimony.
He's entitled to testify as a lay witness, just like the first witness did. He's not an expert. He's not been asked to be an expert. He's not qualified to be an expert. And his opinion is a lay opinion, and you and I know what that means. And I will explain that to the board.
I'd like to get some more things in the company. Present, if I may.
Come back to the podium, Mr. Henry. Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, let me say this. Basically, it has to be expert information.
What I'm referring to is somebody from the M T S A, which is part of the D O T.
Yes, I understand.
I'm just reading that information.
I understand you're delaying it, but that particular expert is not here.
Okay, man.
Say that it's from them, but you can certainly express your opinion. Okay? And you have expressed your opinion in reference to the traffic situation. Okay?
Would you like this to be copied in?
We cannot, because he, the individual from.
I understand.
Yes, he is.
Any other reports? Thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. June Collins, please.
Good evening. My name is June Collins. I live at 1130 N C State Highway 902, directly across the street from the proposed site. This S U P represents Hall River Christian Academy as a charter school. It's referenced by the town, Retson, and T I A 15 times as a charter school. However, the executive director of the Office of Charter Schools of N C D P I states they are not a charter school, and a charter school cannot be religious-based. H R C A is registered with the state of North Carolina as a private school. In addition, the General Counsel of the N C D O A states that they are a private school. The S U P represents them as a charter school, which is a publicly governed and funded, funded school, when they are clearly not a charter school, but a private entity which is privately governed and charges tuition fees. I question this and how the permit application could proceed. Moving on, I believe that the five required S U P review standards have not been met. Prior to this meeting, I sent, I sent a five-page letter to the B O C through the Pittsburgh Town Clerk. In this letter, I addressed all five S U P review standards individually. I provided valid points in detail with references and evidence of non-compliance for all five of these standards. I can't cover all of this in three minutes. I tried. I timed myself, and I would have to reduce it by 80%. That would be equivalent to reducing this 278-page S U P down to 56 pages. It would not convey the same message. Therefore, if you haven't already, I urge you all to read my letter. I invested a lot of time and effort in gathering the evidence presented in this letter. I referenced materials such as the Town of Pittsburgh Comprehensive Transportation Plan, the N C D O T, Pittsburgh Unified Development Ordinance, Pittsburgh Land Use Plan, the D R M P Traffic Impact Analysis, and the Pittsburgh Future Development Map. Respectfully, I ask you to please read my letter before making a decision on this S U P. Branding an S U P for this development would be contrary to the very purpose of Pittsburgh's U D O and L U Ps for the R A Zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I have Brian Hyder.
My name is Brian Hyder. I live at 34 Carriage Court, directly across from the proposed school site. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak and be a part of the process tonight. My first time doing this, so it's always interesting to try something new. I come to you guys today as, as a guy with two small kids and somebody who works, and I share some of the same concerns as my neighbors.
Right.
A left-hand turn lane, could it impact my ability to get out of my drive and take my own kids to school in the morning? Yeah, it might. It might. So I'm definitely not an expert witness by any means, but I'm certainly not the village idiot either. So my goal tonight with my testimony is to provide a few facts that I've come across. And I hope is that by providing some of those, they will prompt you all to ask the right questions and put this right considerations in place. The school is planning for a future growth of around 500 students, all by car, no buses. 902 is already a commuter route for folks on the west side of Pittsburgh, not only that immediate area, but also for the folks in Goldston, who will also be impacted by their journeys to work in the mornings. With the, the move of 15 to go up 87, I can tell you myself, each morning trying to get my kids to school is more difficult since that move has been made, mostly trying to decide when to turn left in front of dump trucks full of gravel coming up that route. As a concerned citizen, just in that note, I highly recommend a signal there, because that would really help me out in the mornings. And I'll try and speed through these with only one minute left. There are already two schools and two daycares within a mile and a half of the proposed site. All of that combined is going to create an issue for Pittsburgh and general congestion across from me. Pittsburgh Elementary and Horton Middle already fill their queues in the mornings. All you have to do is drive by those sites at those peak times. You can see that. The proposed future growth of Hall River Christian Academy would be larger than each of those two schools today. The other concern that I have is around the traffic study. I don't think that it accounted for all of the parent trips. The parent trips were only 66, and the staff and student drivers were combined together as 39, and that data can be referenced on page seven of the traffic analysis. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hyder. Dale Spaulding. And then we have Candace.
Candace won't be speaking.
Oh, okay.
As the others have said, thank you for your time tonight. And going through some of the documentation, there's one thing that I, that we've, we, excuse me, Dale Spaulding, live at 15 Carriage Court, directly across the entrance driveway that is proposed. One of the things that we've been concerned about is the lighting. And I think it is in the Reston paperwork that it says all the lights will be turned off at night. I didn't see that on the documentation here today, but if that happens, that would be wonderful. That is a concern that we've had, that that field is beautiful as it is empty. The stars, the, the animals that come through there, it's, it's just incredible. Obviously, all that's going to change. Yeah, traffic is definitely a concern for us. Do you people know that's a 55 mile an hour road? Did you hear what Tim said? Four people have died on that road. Can somebody change the speed limit? Is anybody concerned about that? It's your children. In regards to the value of the property, I have firsthand experience with construction destroying the value of my property. That is not to say that after the construction was finished, it did come back up. But I am very concerned about the length of time that it's going to take to build this whatever. Starts out with phase one, and then who knows when phase two, three, or the church is even going to be built. We're talking about possibly a decade or something. Our housing prices will be affected during that timeframe. You brought up a very valid point about where is the water for the fire suppression coming from? If it's runoff water, rainwater, that would be excellent. If it's well water, how does that affect us that are all on wells? Sucking out our well to provide for fire suppression. And just to be clear, fire suppression doesn't have to be water. There are plenty of other systems that can be designed not with water, and you ought to consider it for your school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Spaulding. Jim Shavers.
Thank y'all. Hope that y'all received the letter that I wrote. I was portrayed by these people as the man that cried about the dead babies. So yes, I've lost three children, and my most recent one was in a wreck with two children, both high school age. So what these people don't understand is we've seen the wrecks. Whether it's the parents driving or the children driving, we've seen the wrecks directly. And I live directly across from the site, 58 Carriage Court. When I pull out, it's a death trap every day, 55 miles an hour coming up from Bear Creek. 55 miles an hour with the motorcycle drag races every single day and night. To put a turn lane there, let's count the wrecks. It's going to happen every single day. Because of the way people drive through there. Now, yes, I'm very emotional about this, because yes, I, I've seen it happen, and I know what happens. And no matter what traffic study you have out there, you're not accounting for what's happened already. Two weeks ago, serious wreck, kids all over the street. A guy in his yard. You know, since I've been there 13 years, I've seen all this. When I heard about this school coming, first thing I want to do is move. Yeah, they're going to ruin, destroy my beautiful property values that I've worked so hard to create. I am the owner of the, well, the caretaker owner of the well for three families here. I pay the utility bill for it. That's going to impact us. Do they care? No. They've trespassed on our properties. They've been trying to buy us off with little bribes and flowers and I pulled in and she's having to run that lady off her property. I couldn't get in the property. She's blocking my driveway. That's the kind of harassment type stuff that we're getting out of these people. They bring all their experts in, they waste all of our time, listen to other experts, and not a single one of them live across the street from where that school is going. Not a single one of them is going to have to pull out every day and have to slam on their brakes and hope somebody doesn't hit them when they go to turn in every night. That's what we deal with every day. Changing the speed limit, it's not going to fix it. Putting a red light in our driveway is going to make our life worse. Because, you know, we don't need a driveway red light at our street. What you need is traffic enforcement, some police down there slowing it down. It's not going to help having a school. Yes, we do have a beautiful place where we live. We love the field. We know that the school doesn't come and the church doesn't come. Which as a matter of fact, you know, when I bought it, y'all had a sign out there, future home of the church. And I said, we'll buy that place, because I'm, I'm a Christian man. I went to 12 years of Christian school.
You're educated.
I'm a subject matter expert for a top company locally, so I'm not an idiot.
Yes.
Know what's going on around here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does any of the board members have questions for the witnesses? For the witnesses?
I do have a due diligence question for, for the Hall River Christian Academy group and their spokesperson. This is not to impugn, this is not to accuse. It's a due diligence question, because I just want to cover all bases. So the question is this, in the past 10 years, if any of your expert witnesses or their firms presenting evidence tonight been involved in litigation with a local municipality involving alleged errors and/or omissions of evidence that they provided. So I would love to hear from anybody who could answer that part.
I'm trying to find the connection of how that's relevant, but is your question about if, if their expert testimony has been subject to a court saying that it wasn't accurate or that one of their projects that they testified to got overturned?
Rephrase the, the two options for me again.
So whether the testimony that they presented was accurate or just that project that they testified to got overturned in court?
I understand. The, my question is more of accuracy than overturn.
I guess I can go and start down the line with Mr. Bogel. Mr. Neal? Mr. Stevenson? Mr. Kirk? Mr. Kirkland? Mr. Neely? I know that we still have a couple additional rebuttal witnesses we would like to go and call. We're happy to go and entertain questions now if we call those and we can go and answer questions too.
Okay, one moment, please. Any additional questions from the board first? Go ahead, please.
I'd just like to call Ms. Penny Hall real quick.
Okay.
To go over this distinction between private and charter school. I believe that there was, uh, an error in some sort of agenda packet or something, but I'll have Penny go and clarify.
Of something that was brought up by one of the opponents.
Okay.
I can clarify that we are a private Christian school. We are not a government-funded school. Are there any other questions on?
Next, I'd like to go and call Ms. Carol Sanders.
My name is Carol Sanders. I live at seventy-three Woodbury Forest, Pittsboro, North Carolina. I am a neighbor of this property. I am within one thousand feet of this property. I have lived there for twenty-seven years. I do have the experience of turning left on that road every day, um, many times a day. And I don't see how the school will cause issues any more than a normal day of Sunday afternoon when the hundred motorcycles come down Monto Two anyway. Um, there are traffic issues. Um, I am a proponent of Hall River Christian Academy coming to this facility, coming to this property. Um, I'm excited to have children, um, being, playing and having sports and extracurricular activities on that property. I would rather see that happen than a four-hundred home neighborhood be put on that property. This will be a property, the school will have the yard maintained. It will have beautiful landscaping that will be maintained at all times. I feel that having another school on the west side of town is a necessity for our growing community. Um, I feel that we have so many people moving here that this just gives another choice for the parents that are coming in. We all like choices and as parents, we always do. This school will create jobs for teachers, administrative staff, support staff of many different kinds. Um, I see that this will provide value for the, um, for sports and different children activities being held on this property. Um, I feel that building this school on that property is a commitment to the future of Pittsboro and its development, how it can grow and the children that graduate from that school, how they can come back and contribute to our community. I don't see really, like I said, the impact on traffic more than any other day. Um, considering the school, it will just be certain times of the day. I would whole lot rather see this kind of development than a neighborhood at this time. And I just thank you for your consideration of this special use permit. Any questions?
Ms. Sanders, just real quick, could you go and state your address again for us?
Yes, it is seventy-three Woodbury Forest.
And then looking at this GIS map, is that where that blue dot is located?
Yes, sir.
So you live very close proximity to not only the, well, it's both the churches, the churches parcels with the site where at the school.
Yes, and I have to come again that road and turn left many times a day.
So you obviously live in a close proximity, do not share the same concerns and sentiments as some of your younger, younger neighbors?
No, I do not.
Thank you. So at this time, that's all the witnesses that we are prepared to go and call. I guess before I go into the closing and before you guys close the public hearing and deliberate, uh, we're happy to answer any questions that you all have. Otherwise, I'll just go into my, my closing slides, which I will try to make it very brief.
Does anybody, anyone on the board have any questions at this point?
Have all of the opposing, uh, parties spoken?
Okay.
We heard so much testimony tonight, just compelling. And I know that our staff has been diligently accruing conditional, conditional, um, arguments whether or not to approve this. Can you step forward and recount exactly the conditions that we had some doubts with? Ms. Armstrong?
I made a list of nine items that would need to be conditions should it be approved. And they are as follows. The shared access agreement per NCDOT's requirement must be met. The second one, the TIA must be updated to include fifteen five oh one and the church impacts with the NCDOT re-review to make sure that that still meets. That's adjustment for both. Completion of the NCDOT improvements as required in both phase one and two, October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five NCDOT letter. And if they, per the new TIA division, if they see any additional items, they will have to be met as well for that, that road. The fourth one is water sewer and fire must be identified at site plan and provided design at CDs. Otherwise, it can't be approved. Uh, per section two point six of UDO for the, um, overlap district for watershed four, buffer and density conditions must be met. And per ten point four point ten K three point C, not to exceed ten percent increase in the total non-residential floor area. So anything that's outlined right now, can, cannot go over ten percent more? Or would that have to come back here? And that meets the twenty-four percent requirement and the buffer piece for both of those. The only allocation will be allowed to shift the footprint where they're at that buffer because they do not show the hundred foot. And then six, per chapter four, stormwater and floodplain management. It will require a flood study over forty acres and there is a stream on it. So that will have impacts and they need to address that and check what they, um, that need to be submitted at site plans. Sixth item is per chapter four again. Meet all future reviews and be shown accordingly per the site plan to CDs. For stormwater must meet, um, the stormwater requirements. If they intend to use it as fire suppression, it must meet the stormwater if it's a primary stormwater device first. And then any additional items for the fire will have to follow so that it does not impact stormwater requirements. Development, uh, number seven, the development required to meet the conservation open space requirements and the items outlined in those which would include, um, uses for that piece. Number nine, a lighting plan shall include the photometric plan for the site and the limits of the property line will be the extents which should not exceed.
Can you repeat that one?
The lighting plan shall include a photometric plan. So basically, there's a set of numbers per light and shows kind of like the
The lighting.
Light is. And they can turn the structures, the heads. So it would need to include that. So it's not off the property and or in sensitive areas such as the stream, the wetlands, pieces.
That would be included at what point now?
That should be at site plan.
Site plan?
Yes. That's what I have in my list. That's about completion of the list.
Okay, all right, thank you. You have another question?
Can I have one of our experts go and at least address some of those conditions?
Just one moment, I think that you have a question.
I, I'd like to hear this first.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So the conditions, and we want to work with you guys to make sure we're meeting everything when we get to, uh, the, the next phase of, um, of submittals. But several of those conditions sounded like things that would already be required. As I understand a condition, a condition is something that's, needs to be met in order to approve the SUP, correct? Um, so if we're going to meet those pieces in the next round of submittals and the engineered plans, there's really aren't conditions for whether you would, you don't need to add those as conditions to the SUP because we have to meet them anyway further. Does that make sense?
That's dependent, but in this case, they need to be met as part of the requirement.
Right, so like with the, the light study, that is something that's required for our engineered plans and is something that we will submit. But shouldn't have to be a condition on the SUP because it's already required later.
The condition in this case is actually the limits of the property line, lights cannot exceed it. That is not a normal one in this case, especially with the, this, that section back there aren't required because it was brought up.
Okay, so any of these, we're glad to work with you guys to make sure we meet them. We just, there were several of those that sounded like there were pieces that are already required, so it didn't need to be listed as a condition. It really doesn't affect the SUP if you add something that is a requirement later anyway. So we're glad to, to meet those.
Yeah, I will write them out as the conditions.
Good, perfect, that's, that's what we need is how they're written out well.
I will make sure they're typed up.
So, uh, Ms. Armstrong, uh, and Mr. Coon, Tingle, uh, several of these, uh, conditions that you've described, there's been some pushback from the applicant. And, um, one of my least favorite things is when we try to wordsmith in the course of a hearing. And, um, yet I still have some additional concerns that, that, um, I'd like to raise and questions that I'd like to probe further. But I am leaning in the direction of, uh, remanding this application back to the planning director for further consideration in order to sort those things out so that it's explicitly clear to both parties. Uh, and so that when it comes back to this board, we know exactly what it is that we're, uh, voting on. I'm not quite sure how to proceed with some of the oral testimony that was presented. Because I don't know whether the traffic impact analysis study that was conducted and for which expert testimony was presented incorporated those four deaths along that road. I'm further curious about the process by which NCDOT changes the speed limit on highways around a school. And at what step, what stage that would happen. And I have a lot of history of frustration with NCDOT and their, in my opinion, unresponsiveness to municipal requests to change, uh, speeds. So I'm quite nervous about that. And I would honestly prefer to have assurance that A precedes B, that indeed the highway speed is going to be changed. And then we could contemplate this. But I don't know if we have that prerogative.
GTJ, it's a county, it's a state road. And I assume that they would not lower the speed limit until there was a school there.
May I, I, it seems like the, a lot of those questions, our traffic engineer would be able to at least give some sort of an opinion on, would it be helpful for him to come up?
Happy to hear traffic engineer's opinion, also like to hear staff's opinion.
Ronald Stevenson, again, um, in relation to the speed limit, the way that DOT typically does it is they can accept a request for a, or speed reduction, speed limit reduction. But the way they evaluate that is they actually go out and take speed measurements along the road. And then if there's, um, and, and they, they would, they would reduce the speed limit if there were, um, if the, the data that they collect in the field would support that, but they wouldn't reduce it sort of in advance of that. So they wouldn't, DOT typically does not just reduce the speed limit. Because there's quote speeding, you know, on the road, on the roads. They would typically reduce it if they went out and saw data that would, um, support that vehicles are actually going to drive at the lower speed limit. That makes sense, they don't want to go lower the speed limit to forty-five if they're not going to drive that, you know? And so they don't want to create an, uh, an issue there. But what I can tell you is that it, it is very common for, uh, and I know we've all seen these, to have school speed limit zones, so school zones where the speed limit would be reduced by at least ten miles an hour in that school zone. So that is something we could work with DOT on, um, for this particular, uh, location here to see if we could get, get that done. But, um, and we'd be happy to bring that up to them as well. But they, yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't do that in advance. You know, it would be when the school actually is there open. It's when they, when that would potentially occur.
Thank you, I'm, I'm very aware of the eighty-fifth percentile rule and, um, how utterly inadequate that is uh, in the face of modern science about, uh, speed and safety. Um, but we're trying to drag NCDOT into twenty-first century and so, you know. Um, but I appreciate your willingness to HDOT on that request. Yes, can we hear from, from staff?
As part of the updated TIA, we can request the NCDOT review for the reduction of speeds and address the deaths in the actual area along that section. Because that is usually what is done on the national when you go for improvements as well.
Do have one additional comment. And my concern is about the fire pond and the well and septic. I would like to, can't really, I would like to hear some more additional information about that fire pond and how that works. So if you could, you all could bring back some more information from, of a specialist about that. And also, is there an example of one that you are aware of?
It has been a while since I've seen one used.
Okay.
Usually in the county. So I could request, since they've already done an initial analysis, that they could submit that as part of it. So we can actually see what he has outlined, suggestions for it directly.
Thank you.
One of our experts addressed your question?
That'll be fine, but I still want some from our staff. Yes.
I've been, um, on a project that had one of these. I was not the, the person who designed this, was I the architect, not the, the civil? It was a different civil engineer. Um, the San Diego Classical Christian, um, does have, uh, the existing fire, or existing pond that they use as a fire, fire pond. As we said, in, in this phase of the project, the SUP, um, we need permission basically to go further so that we can do all the engineering design. Because that's, that's our next step. But we have to get past the SUP first, um, before we encumber Hall River, uh, with all of But we have to get past the SUP first, um, before we encumber Hall River uh, with all of the engineering costs that are uh, associated with designing, fully designing this pond. Um, so identifying that as a viable solution now with a good backup solution of being able to extend the water line uh, is where we stand at this point with that fire, with fire safety, that and also uh, setting up the building so that it's not, so that it does not require sprinklers.
Thank you. Just need some more information from the, our staff, background information and different things such as that for the board.
Want that report at a later date?
Yes, yes, we'll do that, please. Anybody have any additional questions? Discussion.
I'll just mention, um, this being a quasi judicial um, hearing, our objective tonight is to either grant or deny the SUP. Special permit. Uh, a lot of these other issues will be coming out during site plan review and, and other issues at a later time. I'm a little, I'm, don't have all these conditions that Ms. Armstrong wrote down. I tried to write them down as soon as possible, but uh, if the applicant is okay with uh, correcting and going along with these conditions, I'm uh, I feel like we're in a good position to move forward with this uh, special use permit. This is what we're, this is the night is a special use permit, not a site plan, not a preliminary plat. It's a, it's a SUP.
All right.
And we, and by law, we are supposed to make our decision by the findings of facts.
So just let me remind the board what special use application, about a special use application, just as you stated, shall be approved only upon a finding, the special use complies with all of the following. The proposed special use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. The proposed special use complies with all requirements of this ordinance, including all regulations and standards generally applicable within the zoning district and specifically applicable to the particular type of special use. The proposed special use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or is a public necessity. The proposed special use is generally in harmony with the intensity, scale, and character of the development existing or planned in the surrounding area. And the proposed special use is generally consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and any other plans officially adopted by the town board of commissioners. So that is the basis of this special use permit. And if it complies with those things.
All of those things, all of them, right?
Yes.
All of them. I think the biggest hangup I have, I'm, I'm just speaking um, to my fellow commissioners, is the health and safety part. Uh, namely, uh, what to do with uh, as, as, as long as, as long as uh, the Hall River Academy complies with DOT requirements. And DOT approves that, that's the largest health and safety issue I have with this project. It's the traffic. The safety of children going to school back and forth. Love to hear any other comments about that. Yeah, I think that's the crux of the matter. And uh, from what we've heard tonight, uh, unfortunately, the traffic engineer's testimony is, is undermined by the revelation of, of these four deaths. And uh, frankly, I did not know that it was fifty-five miles per hour in this stretch. I've driven it before myself, but it just. Do we have evidence of four deaths? I know there was a, there was a public comment, there were four deaths. Do we have evidence of that?
But is, is that irrelevant to this issue? I mean.
Well, health and safety is.
Well, I never brought up accidents and deaths and any issues.
We can ask for that information and um, as I asked for the average annual daily traffic and um, we can ask for that.
Go ahead.
Um, Chair, at the appropriate time, we ask for opportunity to close. We can address, again, the evidentiary standard, which is before the board, which says it must be competent, substantial, material evidence. While we are all concerned about traffic deaths, Mr. Bonnet's, that was not presented as competent evidence. The only competent evidence regarding traffic safety on that road has come from our engineer this evening. And so uh, it's simply, with all due respect to human life and to the decision you as a board have to make, it's not relevant. We would like additional time to make our closing argument. Thank you.
You all have any additional comments?
I don't have any time.
Yes, I would like to ask uh, Mr. Stevenson uh, to present uh, the fatalities data for this stretch of road.
The um, traffic impact study did not address that specifically, so I, I do not have that information available. Uh, I will say though, that we followed all the requirements that we promised to follow to have an approved traffic impact analysis report, which was done so by the Department of Transportation who owns and maintains the roadways.
And what is the speed along this stretch of road?
The uh, speed on this section, I think it's fifty-five. They, like I said, they, there will be a uh, there'll be a coordination, again, as you've heard tonight, that there will, there'll have to be additional design done and coordination with DOT for the construction drawings. At that point is when we would look at uh, details related to reducing speed limit for a school zone or for them to look at it uh, on their own and determine if they want to reduce the speed, but we can make that request, but that's again, sort of, as you've heard tonight, we've got to get, get to that step to be able to work on those specific design related items.
Any additional questions? From the board? If not, you may present your closing.
I just have a few closing slides there and I'll, I'll go and reiterate too. I heard some comments by the speaking from the public about you all receiving the information outside of this hearing. That is information that you cannot go and consider. You guys are the judges and jury. So I just want to be sure that we're clear that anything that was submitted should not go and be considered in this case and cannot be considered in this case. Otherwise, that, that's a due process violation.
Understood.
I also want to go and reiterate. And I have a copy of my PowerPoint presentation I have with you all, but it's beginning of the PowerPoint presentation. It's on page nine. This is state law. BS one sixty D dash fourteen oh two, section J three. There's going to be testimony at this quasi judicial evidentiary hearing as it deals with the effect of property value. It has to come from someone who's an expert in that field. Certified appraiser, we have that with Mr. Nicholas Kirkland. If there is testimony regarding the increase in traffic from a proposed development would pose a danger to public safety, again, that has to come from an expert. This is state law. It is crystal clear. So I just want everybody to be sure that we have entered in by testimony in the report, particularly as to those two standards, expert testimony, that is substantial, competent, and material. And there is no evidence to the contrary there. So, um, that, I'm a mayor pro temp, already went through the standards, so I won't go and reiterate those again, but can you go to the next slide, please? This again goes to our burden of proof, which Mr. Morpheus explained to you all. The ultimate issue is whether we met the standards of the ordinance, and we did. We met all five standards through competent, substantial, material evidence. And once we establish that, we have a prime officia case of entitlement to the burden, and it's on the burden of the opponents to have substantial competent material evidence to the contrary. And it is our position from the evidence and testimony that was entered into the record and discussed at this hearing, that there was no evidence to the contrary. Next slide, please. So our team, our, and experts have done our homework in this case in showing that we meet all five standards, the detailed site plan, the building design, the traffic analysis, the appraisal information, the consistency and harmony report, and that the project will have solid engineering architectural work. We talked with town staff and as well as the agencies throughout this process. And again, the opposition bases many of their conclusions on conjecture, false assumptions, and stuff that would not be admissible uh, if this was to go and be reviewed by the trial pool. Uh, I'd like to briefly go through how we met each standard through the expert testimony. I'll try to go and be brief with uh, this portion. So the first one, materially endangered the public health and safety. Expert testimony that our project will meet all fire and building codes, or we otherwise meet all utilities for uh, septic and sewer. What am I going to say? Um, once we get to that permitting stage. And again, the traffic impact analysis was performed by Mr. Stevenson. And he again testified in his expert opinion that there would not be uh, materially endangered public health and safety from the school and the traffic from uh, from the project. And then going into standard number two, compliance with UDO. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. You heard a long rendition from Mr. Bogle about how the project complies with all UDO requirements. You also heard the testimony from uh, Garrett Neal, the civil engineering side about how the project will go and meet uh, all the requirements as it pertains to the utility and the fire retention pump. And you also heard from Mr. Stevenson that UDA requirements as pertains to the access and stacking would all be met. Next slide, please. And this has been said a couple of times, but most jurisdictions do not require detailed plans showing compliance with technical ordinances, just like they don't for construction drawings show compliance to state building code. So instead, again, there's usually a condition that must be satisfied for final approval. And that's what will be the case here. This is just getting the SUP, and then those other plans and approvals will happen at those various stages. Next slide, please. So again, standard number three goes to the injury to the value of adjoining property. Go to the next slide, Mr. Kirkland's analysis, provided that there will not be any injury to nearby property values and that this location is actually very compatible for a school type use. Next slide. Going to standard number four, harmony with the general area. Will all provides that if a use is permitted in a zoning district, even as a special use, there's, creates a presumption of harmony, which your UDO does. Next slide. So the parcels surrounding the area are not just single family homes. There's actually an existing church as well as the Pittsburgh Baptist Church that would be next door. There's a, a mix of residential, developed and undeveloped uses. All, all will be in harmonious with the uh, character of the general area, as you heard from Mr. Neely, per his report. And lastly, consistency with the land use plan. Again, Mr. Neely went through how the school project would be consistent with the land use plan, going through examples. Provided both in the UDO and the land use plan, the future land use map. And all that is set forth in his expert report. So, and finally, you know, we, we discussed this a little bit a, as discussions went on, a lot of part of the hearing. You know, appropriate reasonable conditions can be imposed on special use permits. I'm sorry, next slide. Pursuant to one sixty D dash seven oh five. Um, and so we're open to some of those proposed conditions, if those could go and be ironed out. But I will say the most important thing, next slide, is that we, the applicant, had met our burden of proof in this case through substantial competent and material evidence. There has been no evidence to the contrary by any of the opponents here, so therefore we are entitled to SUP approve. At this time, we would ask that you all render a decision on our SUP permit here this evening and find in our favor that we have met all the standards in the town's unified development ordinance as required by state law and ask that you approve the special use permit in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. I think this is, in my ten years, I think this is my third or maybe fourth quasi judicial proceeding that I've taken part in. And by far, this was overwhelmingly uh, the best and uh, most thorough, most detailed. However, um, I'm not convinced. Uh, Mr. Herman, uh, you state that there's been no evidence to the contrary of any of these assertions, but very significant doubt has been raised in my mind about the safety question uh, because um, the traffic engineer was unable to answer one of my questions. So, um, our attorney has informed us that we have four options that we can approve the application as submitted. We can approve the application subject to conditions. We could deny the application. Or we can remand the application back to the planning director for further consideration. And um,
Before you do that, I have to close the public hearing.
Oh, of course. Thank you. Sorry to jump ahead.
If there's no public discussion on this case by the board, is there any? I will now close the public hearing. No additional testimony, evidence, or public comments will be heard or considered. So now you can go forward.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, I got ahead of myself there. Well, uh, I believe that we've heard nine conditions. But again, one of my least favorite uh, most disliked aspects of, of this job being a town commissioner is when we're engaged in something like this and we're read uh, conditions uh, for conditional zonings or, or quasi judicial uh, SUPs. Um, I think we need clarity. I think we need it in writing. And so I will make a motion that we remand the application back to the planning director for further consideration so that we can get those nine conditions in writing and as many of them as possible worked out between the applicant and staff.
Just as a point of clarification, would that be coming back to the board?
I'm sorry, it's possibly doing that.
I just want to understand what, what the condition or what the, the motion is requesting.
Okay, he's going to repeat his motion.
Thank you.
Uh, I move that we remand the application back to the planning director for further consideration. Mr. Messick, what is the next step?
Well, that, those four options come from the UDO, uh, as far as what your choices are in, in terms of disposition. Uh, assuming you get a second and assuming there's a favorable vote, then if the, the matter would be sent back to the planning department. And the, if there are to be conditions to the permit, then they can be proposed and discussed with the applicant and then presented back at a further meeting of the board. But there are some technical issues, since there are two board members who will not be with us uh, after, you know, December, and uh, two, there will be two new board members who have no idea what's going on. But we will have to address that if that's the will of the board.
With all due respect, we would ask if that's the decision of the board, and perhaps it won't be. We understand what's going to be considered, what additional information is needed. The hearing has been closed at this point, and so. And so it's unclear what the planning staff will be doing aside from putting conditions in writing. So we, we'd ask for additional clarification as well.
It was my understanding that Mr. Bonnetts was asking for conditions to be, uh, written down and worded and, uh, discussed with the applicant.
Precisely.
Um, just want to clarify Commissioner Farrell's assertion that the S U P is what is in question right now. And whether or not there was compelling evidence, opposition evidence that was presented tonight by qualified people, qualified witnesses, expert witnesses, I think is what the term is. And I cannot second it for that very reason. I think we have legal obligations here as opposed to what somebody might consider right or wrong that we have to consider.
Mr. Herman's and Mr. Morpheus's, uh, recitation of what the law requires is accurate.
We have an opinion by our town attorney. And, uh, I don't know if we're going to get a second from Mr., or Commissioner Bonnetts', uh, motion.
Are we still in discussion?
Well.
There's a motion as well.
There's a motion on the floor, so you can make comments on the motion.
Second, but I have some discussion.
No. It is.
I guess maybe this is for staff. With the S U P and the conditions that are arose, is it, can we move forward with the S U P and assure that the conditions will be met from the applicant?
In written format.
Sorry?
If they're in written format, yes. An awful lot of them are just, as I've said, you know, future issues.
Yeah, I agree that some of the issues are future because you address them during site plan.
If they were in written format, they would be included as conditions.
Yes.
Right. His question was, if we move forward without conditions, can we meet these? Is that what, is that your?
Exactly. Can we move forward to S U P and address the conditions later that are not involved with a site plan?
Probably a few of them. But some of these, I, I mean, I think May pointed out that these would need to be written conditions that we tack on to the S U P. But if they're not in writing, then the applicant's willing to adhere to those conditions, then I don't see a reason not to put the conditions in writing.
So some, you said some are and some are not. Can, can you more clear with that?
Do you think?
I, I believe the stormwater, the septic, the well, the fire, all are technical requirements that will be addressed and have to be met before any site plan is approved. I'm not sure what the other conditions were other than those.
It can all be required at the site plan to be done and addressed no matter what, but to a point to the detail. Some of the stipulations that we talked about are not normally in full site plan. There, some of them are C Ds. But they can make or break the project.
Do you have a microphone? I don't know if, if, I don't know if you, I couldn't hear you.
That one works. There you go.
I apologize. I'm not getting my person.
That's fine. I'm good here.
It would all have to be addressed in the site plan because waiting to the C Ds may cause problems if they're not in this form written.
Definitely, we could say no, correct?
The site plan.
But for example, they're not going to get a driveway permit unless they comply with whatever D O T requires. And whether you have it in a written condition today or you wait until the site plan, you're not going to give them a site plan until they have a driveway permit. And so you're going to be dependent on D O T to be satisfied. So they'll have to do.
An implication that there are some, some conditions that may not have, we don't have the leverage to.
Yes, the U D O doesn't specify requirement, but there was statements directly on those items. Um, for example, the safety projection, the moderation piece, they're talking about safety issues have to be in the T N A with the request for reductions of speeds, looking at the deaths. That would be in, that's actually what it's called, the safety projection, moderation. That would be in there. We don't have anything in that specifically, but that is.
And there is no, there is no opposing evidence of that, correct? So we shouldn't be ruling on that, correct? So that you cannot be a conditional part of this, uh, agreement, this ruling, unagreement ruling. Um, this is the discussion and I'm, I'm open to other comments about this.
Mr. Messick, I look for you for that, for that answer.
Mr. Morpheus.
I just want to say, we've conferred, thank you. We, we conferred with our engineer and also with our client, and the nine conditions that Ms. Armstrong previously put forward, um, did you include the safety projection language in that condition?
Request for the speeds and the deaths, that's pretty much covered it.
We would accept those nine conditions, um, as part of the special use permit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so.
All nine, yeah.
All right, so Commissioner Bonnetts had made a motion. That motion was not seconded. So therefore, that particular motion is null and void. So the other options, now open the floor for another motion. You can approve the application as submitted. Approve the application with, subject to conditions, and you indicate, you can deny or remand the application back. And that is what Commissioner Bonnetts wanted to do. So whatever, whatever type motion the board would like to make at this time.
That's. Anything else? I'm not having that.
So I move to approve the petition. The smaller, thank you.
Issues, conditions.
With conditions as a nine, nine conditions that have been agreed on by both parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
All opposed.
Well, the ayes have it. So special use permit has been approved.
Everybody, we're still in session. Sorry.
We have to, we got to have a motion. We haven't adjourned yet. So now we have to have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you all.